Hey, I'm sorry about that. You know, you're at the wrong party when you're the only one in the room. So my apologies for being late. So welcome everyone to the June 8th regular session of the Tiger Twolleton School Board. We met earlier this evening in work sessions at 4:15 and at 5:00. Director, oh, excuse me, Dr. Ricky Smith, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none, Chair.
This evening's consent agenda includes the minutes from May 18th, March 12th, Human Resources Report Personnel Action, second reading of the board policies, and the ORTI Annual Conference Contract. Board members, are there any items that you would like to see changed on the agenda? Or I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent, that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. And as always, Director Bowman, answer by IRNA.
Aye.
Director Emerson.
Aye.
Director Fox.
Aye.
Director Zertzmeid.
Aye.
And I for myself. Okay, with that, we will move to recognition and good news. Director Rose and Lisa Burton. Somebody on mute?
Sorry, it's me, Lisa. I forget to have to click back on that screen to get my microphone to show up.
No worries.
So, good evening, everybody. Zinnia Ullin is joining me this evening, representing and honoring and recognizing our basic needs teams. The basic needs teams, oh, sorry, let me present my screen, sorry about that. Okay. Can everybody see that okay?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so our basic needs staff have been supporting families in their buildings for years. They are counselors, teachers, office staff, administrators, support staff. And now with the coordinated work of our Family Pillar and Family Resource Center teams, there is a stronger network to support the BNTs in providing resources and support to our families across the district. And they're now able to collaborate more in culture and provide culturally specific support to our families. And I would like you to hear directly from those teams sharing how the basic needs teams were developed and the work that they're doing. Oh, sorry. This is our, this is a page of our Family Resource Center team and Family Pillar team that has come together to work together to create this collaboration and the support for our basic needs teams. And then the pages following after the video are the different teams that are currently supporting families in each building.
My name is Alfonso Ramírez, I'm the coordinator over at Tiger High School and in the Tiger Twolleton School District. And I'm also an Equity Family Pillar leader for the district and for Tiger High School. And we've been organizing over time into groups throughout elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, to have conversations about how to improve the educational experience and learning environment for our families. Part of that is taking care of their specific cultural needs, their basic needs. The decision was made to cancel classes. And some of us within the district were really concerned about the needs of our families. We knew that they were losing jobs and we knew that this was going to impact learning for our kids. So we decided to collaborate with Pack with Pride to deliver food boxes to our families and to provide food boxes for them to come pick up if they could. And we did a lot of work and it was very challenging to try to coordinate with the families. And, you know, we got our McKinney-Bento kids in there. It was just a lot of calls and a lot of work. Since we had this building equity coordinator sort of network of equity leaders, we thought, well, that would be a great match for the work that we're doing since they're already connected with our families anyway in a culturally specific way. So we then used that and layered that into our work. They would become the basic needs team and we would organize and support that work. It's really resulted in a tremendous impact for our families. Our most marginalized families were attended to in a culturally specific way. One of the things that has been really fantastic and promising is the idea of not organizing our help around our systems. So like high school, middle school, elementary, but really organizing the help around families. And a family may have a kid at the elementary school, the middle school, the high school, but really trying to have one person work with a family as opposed to, you know, three different people from three different schools. And that, I think, is really something that we can build on in the future as we begin to partner together as a BNT team.
I feel very fortunate to be part of not only the basic needs team, but also part of the Family Pillar team. And basically, the Family Pillar, to put it in context, the Family Pillar team is a group of people that come together to discuss issues that might be happening with our families within their community. But then we have a team that if there's a built connection already over at, let's say, at a secondary level, then we can work things out with the family, making sure that they feel comfortable, that there's a real meaningful connection and that we have resulted. So I think that we're able to create a sense of, within the family, a sense of that all levels are important. You know, so we are starting to make sure that we let the family know, hey, you know, it's not only an elementary level when you really, really have to be invested in your education. It's through all levels. And we feel strongly that if they start seeing us and we start building those relationships, let's say I'm at the high school level, but if they start seeing me as part of the team from the elementary level, once their student has reached out, that level, then they say, oh, I recognize him. I know who he is, you know, and definitely they still continue that support to the student.
My main focus are just underrepresented students, the marginalized students, and making sure that they're accessing education the best they can. And along with that, my main focus is families and how to engage their families into not only participating in school events, but also engaging to their students' learning. It's very important to talk about the equity work we're doing. It is not easy, we all know that. And at Tiger High, especially with the numbers that we have of our students that are not represented by our teachers by any means, trying to work that, work with the teachers, bring that cultural lens, help them understand how things could be differently. And along with that, the Family Pillar, trying to work collaboratively, how to reach our families, how are we serving our marginalized students best, highlighting what the families can bring to create a partnership.
My name's Catherine West and I direct the Tiger Twolleton School District's Family Resource Center. Over the years, we've really wanted to have a more integrated program with the Resource Center in all of the schools and had a long-term vision of being much more interconnected with all the different school counselors and family liaisons and secretaries and staff who are helping connect families with resources. And one of the amazing things that has come out of it is this really important foundational work, moving us toward being a really connected system within the school district, towards strengthening those relationships with staff. The basic needs team has been wonderful in that so many staff are participating and directing the work. We're all really, everybody's voices are being heard and coming to the table and thinking about how we can best support families, what the needs are. It's just nice to remember why we're all here, what our collaborative efforts really mean and to move forward together as a group.
The connection we've made with so many staff members that maybe didn't know about the Resource Center before, we have been able to, you know, interact, they've been able to see us on their group meetings. Just that collaboration and just knowing that we're there to support their roles and they are, you know, dealing with a lot of the things that we normally would deal with when families are in need and needing those resources and they're having to be the front people now that are making those direct calls. So just knowing that we're there to support them in their roles, just because of our experience and working with families over the years. So all of those things are just now, like Catherine said, the kind of things that we've discussed in those centers, you know, for years. And it's kind of, we're seeing it work. The BNTs, you know, aren't as stressed out because they have our support and then the families feel supported by the whole system and the whole, you know, kind of wraparound services. We're trying to let these families know, we're here to support you from the beginning and, you know, as best we can. So any way we can do that for the BNTs, they seem like they're able to connect with each other and even just know what one school does from the other school, which is wonderful. From what I've heard from them expressed in the meetings as well, which is helpful.
Our equity work sometimes eludes people, understanding like what does equity work mean? And the work that these folks are doing, supporting the BNT, calibrating a system to be more aligned, is the equity work that we are talking about and that's very actionable because in a disconnected system, we push our students to the margins, we push our families to the margins because we don't center their needs and let them know that we see value and want to serve them the way that they want to be served. And the fact that there is so much collaboration and connection between us allows us to hold our families a way that makes them feel that we're doing this truly for them. And so I think that's the work, that's the real equity work that I'm striving for for our district. So I have so much gratitude for the folks that just share their perspectives, but I also have a lot of gratitude for those that are working in the schools. We already knew that there were some of these things that were happening. I know the council would do it all the time, head secretary, secretaries, family liaison do it all the time, but they don't get recognized for it. So it's really important for me to know that they're going to get recognized. And people can put names and faces to those that are doing the hard lifting for students because keeping students whole requires us to do this work as well as the academic work as well.
So, sorry, going backwards. So I'm gonna, I will scroll through the different teams in all of our buildings. If the board members and Dr. Sue, if you would like to comment and share your thoughts.
Oh, I'm with you. Lisa, while you scroll, okay, now we're in sync. Yeah, I'll just start, just what I appreciated was Alfonso kind of starting with, it's not about, you know, elementary, middle, high, it's really about the family. And closing with Zinnia's perspective of behind the scenes doing this work, you know, making things happen for our families that maybe isn't out in front that we see all the time. So so grateful and have the tremendous privilege and honor to work with some of these folks through Pack with Pride. So with that, board members, would you share what you'd like? And then Dr. Sue.
That's my go. Um, yeah, I just, I think, I just think it's an awesome concept to, I thought of this idea, it's awesome. So I just want to recognize everybody and just thank you for thinking, never being satisfied with the way things are, but always trying to look for more opportunities. And wow, I'm just really impressed with that notion of these teams, of people working with the Resource Center to get the families sooner, rather than having the families having to go to the Resource Center. It's almost like we're coming to them. So, and I love, like Maureen said, the concept of one contact per family. Amazing. So kudos. Kudos.
I always love having brought to the forefront the work that is going on that nobody except those few families see in the normal way of things. There's a lot of really amazing people in our district doing amazing work and this is just yet another example of it. And as Zinnia said, this is our equity work in action. It's heartening. Thank you.
Yeah, I think just a tremendous source of pride for me being part of the district, seeing all this work happen. And, you know, I'm seeing, seeing names that are familiar from email threads that I am recognizing faces for the first time. And I also know that a lot of the work that is happening from folks on the BNTs isn't just the source, even just the structure of BNTs. Like I saw Kimery, who has volunteered to deliver food to each of the students personally with support staff so that those students are seeing a face that they recognize. You know, that's not part of her job description. That's on a Saturday. And people are just really stepping up in ways that really, they're just remarkable. So thank you to everyone who's on a BNT and all the work and time you're putting in to keep these families cared for.
I admire the amount of not just time, but effort to be up to date on what all the resources available are and what's best for the family, or that, I mean, not necessarily best, but most efficient. And I'm looking at the list and I quickly counted like 75 names with a lot of people coordinating and working together and supporting one another to keep up with all of the resources. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
And to the question of who, who put this all together, this goes back to our Equity Coordinator, Zinnia, for her leadership and the way in which she has structured and guided this group and this work, among other pieces of our equity, equity work. So again, immense thanks to Zinnia, to everyone who's scrolling across the screen here. Again, you're absolutely right. This is, this is our equity work in action. I think our only miss has been that we have not been more forthright about sharing this with the community and grateful for the opportunity to celebrate these people, but also to elevate their work in these times when people are asking, what are we doing? And to be able to feed families, to be able to connect them with housing, to be able to connect them with healthcare, to be able to connect them with the basic rights that every human deserves. That is a powerful piece of work. And it has been accentuated by the Pack with Pride work relative to 850, at least that, that organization feeds every week. So a great deal of effort made that our children know that we know them by name and by need and our families do too. So thank you to each and every one of you who do this work tirelessly, both during the workday as well as on the weekends. Immense gratitude for you all.
Zinnia, did you want to share any thoughts or did anyone have questions?
I just wanted to highlight just the gift of seeing so many people come together to support our students and families. I think, you know, if you know me, the mantra that we always say, it takes all of us all the time, always. And I think this is an example of that. And then, you know, I just have a lot of gratitude for the Equity Pillar leaders as well as our Family Resource Center. And so just the partnership that we've had thus far with Pack with Pride and just the amazing talent that we have in all of our staff there, they're doing that hard work. So I just wanted to, you know, offer my gratitude yet again. So thank you.
So Zinnia, I think that for this particular recognition and good news, I think you might be the sole representative of so many fantastic members of TTSD. So please, you know, make sure that they know how much, we so appreciate what they're doing and their work and how critically important they are to all these efforts. So if I did a quick scan, I think, yeah, I'm not sure that others are here. So thank you, Zinnia, for your leadership in this area. So, and I think with that, Lisa, it goes back to you as well, right, to Dr. McCall?
Yes. Good evening, board members and others. We have some other good news. We have, I'd like to share with you that we will be having, we have a new principal that will be joining us at Durham Elementary. But before I introduce our new principal, I also just want to acknowledge and thank Rhett Bedrow, who is the current principal, who is retiring, for all of his service to the Durham school community. He definitely will be missed. And I'd like to introduce to you Cleanne Brewer, who will be joining us July 1st as the next principal of Durham Elementary. Cleanne is not new to TTSD. She's actually coming home. Prior to her current role as a principal, as an administrator with Portland Public Schools, Cleanne started out at Durham. She was a learning specialist and then she also worked at Webster. And then David Douglas, and currently she is an administrator with PPS. And what I can share with you, we are definitely fortunate to have Cleanne join us again. She comes to us with many years of experience, with a strong instructional leadership background and with a commitment to equity. And I know that she'll bring with her that passion and her experience and she'll be a valuable member of our TTSD family. So I'd like to, again, welcome Cleanne Brewer to TTSD. And on that note, Cleanne, would you like to share a few words?
Have to make sure I'm not on mute. So I am so excited to be home. I really, when I was in Tiger Twolleton as a learning specialist, I did a lot of work with our equity teams and I really wanted to see what equity looked like outside of Tiger Twolleton. And so that's when I pursued outside district opportunities, going to David Douglas and Portland Public Schools. And I'm thrilled to be able to, over the past 10 years, build just a wide variety of experiences, working with diverse families, looking at what different systems look like outside of Tiger Twolleton and then coming back into Tiger Twolleton to share the wealth of information that I've learned over those years and to learn from what has been happening in the district and to bring all of that work to light for the Durham community. I am over the moon. It could not be a better fit for me. I'm really walking into a community where I, I am, I know at least half of the staff already because I worked with them. So 15 out of 22 teachers I've worked with already. And that just for a new principal, for me, that's a dream come true because it just takes away one hurdle that I would need to overcome in building relationships with staff. So it just feels like a really great fit and a perfect opportunity. And I am so honored and thrilled to be part of the community.
Thank you, Cleanne, and welcome again.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Cleanne, we are, I agree, what a great opportunity for you to have already built relationships and to walk into a new school and already feel the momentum with you. And welcome, as you can tell, we are, as we do our equity work, it's something that we take very seriously and look forward to your experiences and, you know, kind of joining the train as we move forward. And so welcome. I look forward to meeting you in person. We're allowed to do that. But board members, I'll open it up to you all to say hello and welcome.
Hello and welcome back. It always makes me particularly happy when we hire somebody who started out with us back, back when. It makes me, it solidifies for me the fact that we're a good district and people want to be here. And they might leave for their various reasons to, you know, expand on job opportunities. But the coming home, this is coming home. And so I love it when we, when we can do that. So welcome home.
Thank you.
Welcome, Cleanne, and thank you so much for coming back to TTSD and looking forward to meeting you as well.
Thank you.
Hi, Cleanne. This is Sharon and I'm actually just down the street from Durham. So I look forward to being your neighbor and also I'm your liaison. I'm liaison with Durham. So hopefully next year as well. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome back and I'm also looking forward to meeting you, Cleanne.
Okay, Dr. Sue, would you like to add anything?
Absolutely. You know, Cleanne and I've had an opportunity to talk, but I first and foremost want to say thank you to Dr. Lisa and to Director Ebert for their work with the team relative to the selection of Cleanne Brewer. It was very thoughtful. Again, it was equity focused. And really I'm grateful, Dr. Lisa and Director Ebert, for your facilitation of that process and for the team that helped make the final decision. Cleanne, you already know that we are a wonderful place to be and end to work. We are not perfect by any stretch of the imagination. But we appreciate the fact that you would return and bring your wisdom from your previous experience in Portland Public to help make our day, our work richer and to move the work forward. And I couldn't be more pleased to have you as a new member or a returning member to our ranks. So a hearty welcome.
And so with that, so truly, Cleanne, welcome. And I, as chair, I was looking forward to the next item, which of course is Superintendent Board Communication. But Patty, I am just going to let you know that I seem like I can't find the Google Drive for public comment. And knowing that we had public comment, I'm just going to request if you email that or I'm not sure why I'm not pulling it up. So I apologize for the 30-second distraction there, but knowing that that's an important piece for me to pull up. So I appreciate Patty or even, yeah, sending me a note to bring that back forward. So with that, we will move to Superintendent and Board Communication. And Dr. Ricky Smith, we'll have you start.
Thank you so much, Chair. This evening I have both a few nuts and bolts as we come into the end of the year and then just a few brief words in response to a variety of emails that I have received over the weekend that I wish to, you know, highlight and make comment to relative to nuts and bolts. Just as a reminder, as if every child in TTSD hasn't already circled this day, but June 11th is the last day of school for the calendar year. It is bittersweet, to say the least, as we will not be able to hold our annual farewells and closures within our buildings. But I want to say gratitude to many of our principals, particularly at the elementary level, who will be holding parades in cars, you know, being socially appropriate and distanced as they do that. And thanks to Dr. Lisa for working with the elementary principals in a solid protocol that allows us to celebrate and teachers to celebrate their children and children to celebrate the great teachers that we have in this district. And to the question relative to a final calendar for 2021, we believe, we received information today that ODE should drop its final guidance either Wednesday or Thursday of this week. And once we have that, then we will be able to finalize the draft of the calendar for 2021 at the June 22nd board meeting. for 2021 at the June 22nd board meeting. So board, please be prepared for that. And again, my thanks to Dr. Lisa, to Todd, and to Director Robson, and Director Kinch, Director Fields, for, and Director Susan Bernard, for their work with the distance learning team as they are working on Phase Four in preparation to file a, both an instructional plan as well as a public health plan with O D E, which will allow us to move forward into the fall of 2021. Parents who may be listening to this call, please be looking for a survey here within the next week or so as they get concepts with you so that we can get your input and considerations for hybrid model within the schools' days and time for, for groups of students to come in and receive direct instruction from teachers, as well as further develop our distance learning plan in the event that we have another outbreak of COVID and have to go into a shelter in place. With that, I would then move to my last comments, which is coming from a place of immense gratitude to not only those who have been working tirelessly this year. There has been a lot that has been accomplished. Prior to our shelter in place, we were able to move a very large piece of work, S S A, S I A, and we have a budget for 2021. The challenge ahead of us now is how to make that S S A, S I A plan come alive when we know that our resources will be severely restricted. But I want everyone to hear again, an affirmation that we are committed to that plan, to the equity concepts that are embedded in that plan, to serving our historically underserved, including expansion of mental health resources and a sharper focus relative to the larger issues at hand, which brings me to my gratitude to our students who are on this call for your, your resolution, for bringing that forward. I am immensely grateful for your advocacy and for your voice. There, I want you to know that there have been many in the community who have been profoundly concerned relative to our school resource officers and what the next steps there may be. And my response to them has been that we will come into community, and the student voice will lead and as part of that work, because that is how we do our work, we do our work in community in this district as we make formative changes and with the board and with district staff. And so I look forward to those ongoing conversations. I already have secured time with the City of Tiger tomorrow to begin the conversations as to where they may stand relative to that issue. And then look forward to bringing that back to an opportunity to convene community around that. I also wanted to share my profound gratitude for all the emails that I have received in the last 48, it's just 72 hours. Your willingness to share raw emotion and to know that this is a safe place to do that, I am immensely gratitude, I have immense gratitude for that. And I am grateful for your anger, for your tears, for your disappointment, because that is how I, as superintendent, improve my practice and we as a district can move forward. I know that behind all of that, there is passion, and with passion, there is a desire to act. And again, I come back to how do we do our business in Tiger 12th? And we do it as a collective community. And to know that this board stands tall and united, as does Central Office, as does our association leadership, both Kim Manley, who we say a fond farewell to, and to new leadership that comes in for the classified, to Scott Heron, and to the entire T T E A leadership team, how grateful we are for your partnership. Together, it is that, that we will move this forward. You know, we have truly three great public health crises that we are navigating right now. The pandemic, an economic freefall, and now institutionalized and deep injustices in the system for our Black students and families. And when people say, why now? I think it is the convergence of all three that has brought us to a place that we know that we can do better, we want to do better, and we desire to do better. And so it is with gratitude that I share that with you. I am grateful for your continued input and for your grace while we continue to move this work forward. And board, I want you to hear clearly from me this evening. I am in full support of that resolution and would ask for your guidance and support as to how I, as your agent, can make that a reality in this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sue. I, you know, I, it has been a very busy couple of weeks, and like all of you, my calendars have been full. But honestly, I, I'm processing a lot. So I am just going to defer to my fellow board members who would like to share with the, with the rest of us. So whoever would like to jump in?
I'm also going to pass on, on having any board communications this evening. Like Director Wolf, I've been processing a lot of stuff at home, so.
I did want to share just a couple of things. I did listen to the Senate Education Committee hearing, and kind of wanted to play a game with the phrase, please hold the state school fund harmless, because it was said by every single speaker. So I hope that the legislature can figure out a way to do that. So that's definitely the message they, they heard. One thing that I, happened last week, Superintendent Dan Goldman of the Northwest Regional E S D, he sent an hour aside last Monday afternoon at 2:00 and provided staff with a lengthy list of activities that he encouraged them to choose from. And I, I know, I just, I admire that he felt so strongly about it, all of the staff educating themselves and learning that he would say, please take the time to do that. Because I'm sure it made them want to spend even more time on their own. But the exciting news to share tonight is that we did select student representatives for next year for Tiger 12th and High School. Okay, so for 12th and High School, Emily Hong Tran is going to be a junior. She's involved with A S B and the newspaper and Model U N. She tutors Vietnamese skills at the company that she has created. And you may remember her from our last board meeting where she provided public comment, asking us to provide feminine hygiene products in our middle school and high school bathrooms. And for Tiger High School, we have Rowan Kelleher. He will be a senior. And he is involved in speech and debate and Model U N and is an I B diploma candidate. And I know what you're thinking, you're thinking something's missing. And we are missing a representative for Creekside Community. We do have a plan in the works. We've been working with Principal Romas to basically extend the deadline that we had, since we originally had no applications as of the due date. So we thought it was fair to extend it. So we are working with him to, to get those candidates in place and then have another round of interviews just with those students.
You're muted, Maureen.
That is like the four-letter word that I'm so tired of hearing. But anyway, Ben, I was going to hand it off to you. I know you were part of the interview process as well with the students and whatever else you'd like to share.
Yeah, the one thing I would just highlight to add on to what Karen said is we had a really great pool of applicants, and it was not an easy decision for the selection committee. And I, you know, it was one of those moments where you wish you had more, more slots for all the talent. But I am hopeful, we did ask a question about how each student rep would engage their broader school communities, including potentially forming a committee of some kind. So I am hopeful that some of the students who weren't able to be selected can still be engaged in board work during the year. In terms of the broader board communication, I did just sort of want to say out loud that this, this for me has been by far the most emotional couple of weeks of board work, in part because of the context of everything that's happening in the world, in part because of, you know, hearing from some of the students, which by the way, the four students that we heard from at the work session, as you all know, is a very small sampling of the experiences that are actually happening in schools. And every student has their own unique story that could, I think, equally, that would be equally compelling. And I also, you know, we've been getting, this is one of those moments where I think we're being a locally elected official. People, people, they don't really care or know who is responsible for each level of decision. But as an elected official, you're the one that they know, and so they want to. So there's just been so much, probably more public comment, and I say public comment in the emails we're receiving, Facebook messages, texts, you know, running into each other. And I'm trying to process everything and trying to figure out where I think the district ought to go in terms of some of these big questions. You know, I've been thinking a lot about the student resource officer question, and I hope, you know, I'm not approaching that conversation presuming to know the right answer. But I do, I am hopeful and optimistic that Dr. Sue is, is looking at a, a community engagement process to go along with that decision, because I think it's a very big one. And I hope that the board can be involved in that decision as well. And I also think, I feel like I ought to take personal responsibility just as a board member. I keep hearing the why now question over and over, and it just, every time I think about it, it is, it is, it shines a spotlight on the fact that, you know, we've all had opportunities to take these actions prior to today, and none of us did, or most of us didn't, and I didn't. And so I think in that spirit, I'm hoping that as we're examining questions of race in our district, that we're not afraid to acknowledge fault and take responsibility. And I'm thinking everything, you know, starting with that S R O conversation, you know, let's look at the data and see what role race is playing in terms of outcomes. And, yeah. So, yeah, I just think this is, the, the silver lining of this moment that we're living through is an opportunity for us to be really honest and have a really honest examination of who we are and what our vulnerabilities are. And I hope that together we can all rise to that moment. And I'm looking forward to continuing that conversation with our resolution next. But thank you for the opportunity to say that.
Thanks, Ben. Okay, so Sharon, did you go? Did you want to share?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Karen and I attended the Mitch Charter School Annual Review Meeting this morning. And as usual, Carrie is very transparent and humble in all that she's learning. And all they're trying to do is just learning without IT support and one-to-one technology and all that. So, but, you know, they're doing the best they can. And it was a really good connection that we made today. Update on what's going on with them. The other thing I wanted to mention is we are planning as the school-based health center liaison, we're planning to do an update with Neighborhood Health Center. It's supposed to be tomorrow, but I think there was a conflict with Neighborhood Health Center Director's schedule. So I just wanted to update you on that, that we're going to have that conversation touch base about the time of reflection. I reached out to a couple of my friends of color and, you know, kind of just trying to learn, right, what can I do? And one of them said, turn your, turn your emotions to conviction. And that's kind of stuck with me. The other thing, the other, another person told me, she says, educate yourself. And so I have, I've been trying to read as much as I can on history, on just being a bridge, bridge builder with racial reconciliation. But on a very emotional level, I don't know if I'm going to lose it or not. But this week, some of you may know this, I may have mentioned, I don't really talk about it much, but I got this book in the mail, I don't know if you can see it, called Civil Rights Lawyers in the South, The Untold Story. And it's, it was a gift that was sent to me this week by a friend of my dad. And it's a thank you gift, because my dad's in Chapter Seven, for a civil rights case that he tried in Mississippi. So anyways, timely and emotional.
Thank you, Sharon. There, there are no good segues this evening, I don't feel, as we move from item to item. So, but I will move on to public comment, which we do have some. Patty, thank you for sending the link. All of board members, you should all have that organized. And I will go to my go-to public comment readers, Director Zertzmeid and Director Emerson. If you, I believe two of them are identical. But I'll, I'll let you two, I'm sure you've figured out who's going to do what. So I'll let you take the lead.
We do have public comment that is identical, so I'll just let you know who it's from before I start it.
Oh, excuse me, Director Emerson. I realized, my bad, I'm off my game tonight, I can tell. Please give me one moment to talk about protocol and do that process before I start. So for those that are likely listening, if you submitted public comment, our process is you are given three minutes. I will set my timer on my phone, not go on mute. So if the phone does go off, Director Emerson and Director Zertzmeid will know to stop. And you are able to offer constructive criticism of the district. But you will be, or the directors will stop reading your letter should you directly say anything against staff. And that has been our process for many, many years. So I believe with that, Director Emerson, please feel free to go ahead.
Okay, the first one is from Lisa Lamb, who is a parent of kids at Deer Creek and Tualatin. And the same letter is from Jessica Reiser, a mother in a C I S A. Her husband, Robert Reiser, and their student, Brenna Reiser. Portland Public Schools have terminated their use of school resource officers, and it is time for the Tiger 12th and School District to do the same. While COVID is understandably the focus of many school administrators right now, we do not have the luxury of waiting to rewrite policies that target our children of color until the time is convenient. P P S has shown us that terminating the program with police can be done quickly and efficiently, and there is nothing that prevents T T S D from doing the same. The Oregonian Editorial Board credits P P S for recognizing that taking officers out of school was a clear win that didn't need an extensive process and calls the decision a fairly easy one. The Oregonian reports that 55% of 20 arrests made by school resource officers in P P S schools in the 2017-18 school year were of Black individuals under the age of 21, while the student population is only 8.7% Black. The fact that T T S D's Black student population is only 2% makes that fact more, rather than less, concerning. It is time for schools to stop using the police department as a tool and sometimes as a weapon against its students. It is time to end the school-to-prison pipeline, and this can be the first important step, accomplishing that. Police should not be fixtures in our schools. Schools should be places of community and learning. Part of that learning process is achieved by making mistakes. And when our students make those mistakes, we should address that with compassion rather than punishment. Schools should teach students how to resolve conflict and repair harm without giving them a record in the process. The district should be spending its resources on social workers and therapists rather than police officers. And just in case anyone doubts that police officers are present in our schools to ensure student safety in times of emergency, I remind everyone that the police department is still a resource for schools in the event of an emergency, whether we have ones that are specially designated as school resource officers or not. Having school resource officers for the district does not guarantee that a police officer will be present in a specific school having an emergency at that specific time. They will most likely need to be called in any way, and they are available, whether they are coming from another school or from a police station. But having to call 911 to get them there returns everyone to the truth that police officers should be used in the event of an emergency and not in the normal course of school design. Protests are occurring around the world because even in the 21st century, we are still not all treated as equals. We are in historical times, and we need to decide now what side of history we will be on. It shouldn't have taken Brown v. Board of Edg- It shouldn't have taken Brown v. Board of Education to end segregation in schools and it shouldn't take national action now to force school districts to remove policies and structures that treat our students differently. We cannot control what happens at the national level, but we can control what happens in our very own school district. I call on you to terminate the SRO program in our district as a first step in a creating an environment for our children where each child participates, learns and contributes to an even playing field.
Thank you, um and um oh, I'm Karen DuRan. I don't know why I'm echoing. Uh that's new. Um but thank you for that and then Patty, please, if there was any part of that letter, as you always do, include it in the minutes and then that way it can be on um record. So thank you Director Emerson and Director Zertzmeid, I believe you have a public comment as well.
I do, this comes from Heather Nicholas. States, statement for inclusion in public comments for the six-eight board meeting. In response to TTSD's district-wide email subject district statement, re-social media distribution of hate distributed on June fifth, twenty twenty at approximately three thirty-four PST. We want it known that as residents in this community, we find the district's communication unacceptable. We expect a district-wide no-tolerance policy in response to hate and discrimination to include severe consequences to individual students who may cause harm to their schoolmates and our community at large, directly or indirectly. How the district actively, how is the district actively, actively working with the community to identify these individuals participating in such a gross and disgusting disregard for human life and specifically that of George Floyd? A public apology is not enough. Additionally, we request from the district anti-racist curriculum at all grade levels. A plan for strict and swift consequences for those who threaten the basic human and civil rights of others in this community. An open discussion around the necessity for and research-based findings of SROs in our schools. Reallocation for funds to increase the number of counselors and support systems for BIPOC students and their families. Anti-bias bias awareness training for all TTSD employees. A racially diverse school board, administration and teaching staff. Administrators who will uphold the rights of all students and especially those black students and their families who repeatedly experience discrimination in the very stu- schools their parents pay for. We expect a follow-up from the TTSD superintendent and board chair to include a detailed plan about how you are achieving the above and beyond. Clearly, our privileged community needs guidelines and we believe that our schools are what, are where that starts as we all pay into a place of safety and learning for our kids. With regards, Heather and David Nicholas.
Thank you Director Zertzmeid, um oh, let me shut off my phone real quick, or that's gonna go off.
And thank you, Zinnia, for the uh explanation of the five-letter acronym, that was a new one to me.
Just one more relative to the last comment made, um I have, have without um two family and Patty is working uh with Heather Nicholas to secure a um meeting with me so that I can address the, you know, directly the, her concerns uh outlined in the letter.
Um and if possible, I'd like to join you on, since I was called out specifically as well, and I appreciate your proactiveness um on those comments. And I, I think, um I know it is um uh by process that public comment is not a dialogue. Um but I will say that um as uh Dr. Ricky Smith has brought up in terms of SROs, that that is a public safety conversation that in um needs to include um multiple perspectives, including our, our students. I'm sitting here seeing um Obdi and my um um my square here of faces um and as we move forward and looking at all aspects of um the role of an SRO and uh equity instruction. And I also wanna say um we clearly, based on the work session, um we have strides to go, but I also want to acknowledge the system's work, our own staff members of color that have dug deep to start moving this process. And um that the energy is clearly present for us to continue and to aggressively move this work forward. So um with that, uh I will close public comments and I will move forward um to the action items, which the first one, action item A, uh will be the resolution. And Director Bowman, I will hand it over to you as presenter.
Alright, um well first I just wanted to, for anyone who's just jumping on the public meeting, who didn't see um the work session, we did have an hour-long work session um on this resolution um with I don't know how many people, around forty people or so, um leadership from the associations, from the district cabinet, um school board. Parents, students, et cetera, so we did just have a robust dialogue about this. Um I will repeat just a small amount of my comments to introduce and then I'll uh hand it over to the students to again uh make their own introduction in their own words. But in terms of what a resolution is, just for everyone's awareness, a resolution is an official statement from the school board. Um that's why we vote on it together. It's not a solution to all the problems that we will discuss. Um this specific resolution isn't a change to any existing policy, although the resolution does commit the district to making a change to policy prior to the start of the school year. Um and a resolution unfortunately does not provide any new resources um to the district to uh to make changes. Instead, a resolution is just a public declaration and a commitment to be better and an acknowledgement of our own responsibility. And importantly, it sets the direction for the district and provides something for which we as a school board and as a district can be held accountable for. Um so with that, I'm just gonna open it up and uh you know, Obdi, Matt, Kevi. Actually, before I hand it over to you guys, I am gonna say, I don't think Sarah is able to be on with us right now, um but it took a lot of people for this to happen, but it wouldn't be happening without Sarah Gentry and her leadership as uh student body president at Tiger High School. Um and someone with a deep personal commitment to equity. Um so I did just wanna give her that public recognition, even though she can't be here to share her perspective. Um so uh I see Matt, I see Obdi, Kevi, whoever wants to jump in.
Um so I guess I'll start, uh first I wanna thank um everyone for um giving us the opportunity to be able to speak at that work session. And um I think by now you all know my stance on the resolution, um but all I'm asking is pretty much um just please, please vote. Um I, I'm leaving TTSD along with men, uh along with some of the other students I presented. Um but I really hope um you vote in favor of this resolution, so something can finally done. Something can finally be done about all the hate speech that I hear in the halls every single day, walking Tiger High School and throughout the years um in the TTSD school districts, thank you.
I think coming out of the, coming out of the uh work session, one thing that I really appreciated hearing uh in response to all the conversation we had, is I think everybody recognizes that, you know, we, we are late in this. I think everybody feels a personal sense of responsibility for that too. Um I think all the leadership and all the directors and coordinators that we heard from the work session. I think everybody feels that little bit of responsibility, that it shouldn't, it shouldn't have taken um shouldn't have taken numerous murders in the last couple of months for us to actually be, you know, we shouldn't have had have been reactive but rather proactive. But I'm really happy about this resolution, the conversations that were had. Um it makes me really hopeful that, you know, our district can start being a part of the solution and inspire other school districts and neighboring school districts to, you know, no longer be part of the problem, but also part of the solution and be part of this ongoing conversation. How do we help our marginalized students? How do we help um students that we, you know, that we don't look like and we don't speak the same tongue, but you know, we're in the same classrooms together. Um and I'm just uh, I'm, I'm hopeful, I'm very happy that this is quite possibly going to be a nice starting place, that it's not perfect. But it's something that we can work from, something that we can change if we need to. But it, it's, you know, it's time and I'm really happy that we're starting to get the ball rolling on some really important conversations. I'm disappointed that it took this long, but I'm happy that we're finally getting there.
And, and I would just like to start off with just saying thank you, you know, um. It's been, I think, two years now since I first started having these conversations with the district and like, it's nice, it's nice seeing something happen, you know, cause when you're really close to really close to losing hope and then you get a win, you know, it becomes like infinite. So um I just wanna say thank you for that and I also feel like you guys should understand that this is also gonna be history, you know? Um the district right now with this resolution, um and it's not just a win for our district, it's a win for like fifty, the people fifty years before us, fifty years after us. Like this moment right here, when like, when our district was needed to do something and we needed to do something together, we did something. So I just wanna say thank you guys for that and hopefully this passes.
Um thank you, um all three of you and Ben, of course, for introducing, uh introducing, sorry, the resolution. Um board members, I have been working with um district leadership and Director Bowman this week. Um and um clearly uh with student voice and driving a lot of um the language and so I uh please don't take my lack of additional comments or questions as um uh not showing um a strong sign of support for the work that has come forward. Um but I wanna open it up for the three of you who um have not been part of, you know, this process to have questions or conversation, feedback on the resolution.
I do have a question, um no, I wanna start with, I do support the resolution and I have a question about the paragraph about curriculum.
I knew you would.
Um I'm pretty sure I'm aware that we um made some recognition in the, on the first page of the resolution. Um and I I hope that we can acknowledge some of the work that our teachers have been doing over the past couple of years with bond dollars to um to find curriculum that is equitable and does represent all of our students. I am just afraid when I read this that it says we don't have anything and I don't want to not recognize the hours of work that those staff members have put in. So I was hoping that we could change it to say something like some of our current curriculum and that we recommit to using an equity lens, but but I do support the resolution.
I appreciate you saying that Karen, and because you and I are on the curriculum committee and we see the sausage being made by those teachers. Um they do use an equity lens when they look at curriculum. And the, the cold hard fact is there's not a lot of really great curriculum out there in terms of um showing, you know, uh an appropriate a range of, of students, um that it's not as culturally sensitive as I think any of our teachers have wanted. Um but the fact that that's not in our classrooms isn't because our curriculum committee didn't look hard enough. Um it's because the curriculum simply isn't on the um, the state of Oregon's approved curriculum list. And I don't think that it even exists elsewhere. So I, I agree that I think softening up that language a little bit to the idea of recommitting is is a better way and is more uh fair to the amount of work that those teachers have done and staff, rest of staff has done.
So what I wondered from that, um and even having a conversation with my own children who graduated a few years ago and Kevi, Matt and Obdi, you would have this um direct experience, so we have systems curriculum and I agree. And the work, I, I don't sit on the curriculum committee, but I know that Todd and his teams work, and that's a commitment we've made as a district. The things I wonder about are some of the stories or the books in our libraries or the acknowledgement of even Oregon, you know, Oregon's history beyond the Oregon Trail. Right? And, and just some of that deeper conversation, hard conversation, are there opportunities to expand um those aspects? So that's kinda, and I don't have words, I don't have a quick sentence or an edit suggestion. But I appreciate Jill and Karen, where you're coming from to recognize the hard work that our curriculum needs to do, but also that I think there's opportunities where we need to be digging deeper in terms of authors or what have you. And so um Dr. Ricky Smith, you look, um like you're ready to.
Yeah, thank you, I apologize, I realize now that as I lean in to camera, everybody realizes that, that you've got my full attention. Um not that you haven't had my full attention, sorry. Um I would also offer the work that um again, uh Equity Coordinator Zinnia has been doing um with our BECs and other teachers who are coming in to learn how to teach in culturally responsive ways. That is a pedagogy all its own. And what that, what that, you know, that process, that the work that they are doing and learning together and um I had the opportunity last year um to observe through her dinner, she would do, she does these um dinner uh conversations and trainings where teachers come back in and say, this is how I adapted the curriculum so that I could teach in a culturally responsive manner. And so what I would offer to you is that all good teachers, um of which we have a bevy, we are deeply blessed in this district. Know that the curriculum, the materials that they are given are, is a starting place, that there are gaps no matter what. And I think now to your point, um us doing and you're going through and, and continuing to audit what's in our libraries and why is it there? Because as a teacher, you go to look for those supplemental materials. You go to think about how do I enrich my curriculum or, or this particular coursework. Um and it's clear that from what our students, again, listening to the students' voice, it is clear that we have gaps, massive gaps in that practice. However, there is work again, I, I want to lift up the work that, that Zinnia is doing with these teachers who have engaged in this work. Because they will be the ones that will then take it forward to their peers. Um and we will continue to expand that, so it is both um e- even within you know, within our grasp to continue to be faithful that those, the materials themselves lend themselves to allow teachers to do that and that we as a district uh continue to put resources into our libraries um and into our, our variety of instructional resources, so teachers have them at the ready um to be able to deploy and to fill the gaps where it is not there. I would also look up the work that the state has started uh with Senate Bill thirteen relative to Indigenous Peoples curriculum. Um and so as that is developed and refined, then that too, well, will be brought into the district and used uh relative to our Indigenous peoples. So I would offer all of those things, that it is not just the materials themselves, it is the way in which we teach um and design lessons, um and that work is, has begun um and is, and is bearing fruit.
Ben, give us some.
Yeah, I mean, I am comfortable, just to clarify, that in the resolution where it says we acknowledge our current curriculum does not achieve that. We wanna add the word some and say we acknowledge some of our current curriculum does not achieve that, cause I do know there are bright spots absolutely happening in the district. And I don't think the intent was to suggest that there aren't bright spots. Um but um you know, as a student has, has, has said, uh if we act like we're doing everything really well and saying we wanna do better. So I'm happy to add the some if that uh um amends, but I'm not sure what else, what other moves we might wanna make there.
I, I appreciate that, I, I don't wish to, to in, in, you know, infer that we are doing everything well, we are not. What I wanted to share is that the foundation is there. And so if there is a way of crafting language that um demonstrates the, the tension that exists, that there is so much more to be done. Um I think um that certainly provides the impetus uh to continue that work.
Well, and that would be the, what uh Director Emerson said was that we change commit to using an equity lens to recommit to using an equity lens, I think that is, that acknowledges that there has been some, but we need to not lose sight of the ball.
And once again, this is not, uh this has never been my expertise, but I also wonder, Ben, to Dr. Sue's point about um teaching in a culturally responsive way, often it's not just the instruction, it's what's your priority and and how are you delivering that in the classroom? I don't know if there's a place for that and, you know, you all have worked very hard on this language, so if some and re are the right um additions, I'll let that go, but I do appreciate how critical that aspect of instruction. Of instruction is in that conversation. So, um, but I'll let you, yeah, decide that.
The students on the screen have sort of been, uh, you know, deputized by their peers who helped craft to speak on this. So like, I wouldn't have a problem. Including, uh, uh, culturally relevant, culturally sustaining pedagogy, calling that out specifically. I don't, Kavee, Matt, Obdi.
I think, I think my concern with, with changing that part was addressed a couple of minutes before right now. Just saying that's like. If we, if, if we just, you know, wanna make clear that we are doing some stuff well, it's gonna take away from the fact that. You know, some things need to change. And for me personally, I like, you know, the language, I think, in the resolution as it's written right now. Is, I think, I think it's a bold statement. It's direct. I think the, the language right now recognizes that. We as a school district, you know, although we have been trying, we, we are at fault of not, you know, getting there yet. Or, you know, taking it like the past events right now to, you know, to try to get there. I think, I think it would be a lot more powerful with statement from a district, because that's what a resolution is. It's, you know, a statement and commitment as a district. I think it would be a lot more powerful for you guys to admit upfront that, you know, you're not there. Um, and it's taken, it's taken these past few weeks for even me as a, as a, as a student of color to realize that we aren't there. You know, when you're, when you're taught K through twelve with this Eurocentric tale that, you know, the, the white Spaniards were the. You know, the conquerors, they, they came into the new world and found all that, and it starts from there, the adventurers. Um, this whole tale all through your life, you don't, you don't even know what you're missing. And it's taken me until now, until me graduating from the system. To actually do my own research and learn about everything that's going on. I mean, one of the, one, one of those examples was like, I think it was the first day of protests a few weeks ago and. It was May thirty first, it was like some of the first protests were happening, um, in Portland. And now, May thirty first and June first were also the anniversary of what was called the Tulsa massacre. And that's something we never learned about in K through twelve school. I don't know if you guys know what the Tulsa mass- massacre was, but in Tulsa. Back, oh man, I, I believe it was back in, it was way back nineteen twenties, right after World War One. You know, we talk about these massive economic booms after World, that's what we're taught in school, these massive economic booms after World War One. We won in Europe and we came back and we won the world. We were doing so great. America, America has monopolized the econ- the world economy. What we forget about is like where those successes were coming from. Uh, we didn't learn about the red summer, how when we came back from war in nineteen, uh, nineteen. Uh, seventeen, the, the years after that, the red summer in nineteen nineteen where. In cities like in Washington and Chicago, white citizens waged war on brown residents for sharing in that economic, uh. In the economic success. We saw it in Tulsa where a whole booming metropolis of economic. Uh, ability burned down by angry racist white, uh, white resident. Those are things we don't learn. As a P O C student, it's like those things, as I spent the last two years studying Europe and America's economic success with Europe the last two years. In my social studies class, we didn't worry about those things. I didn't know, as a Brown student, I didn't know that these things were happening. I didn't know that we did do some pretty great things, but it was taken away from, I wanna know those things. And I think we, we deserve to know those things. And whether or not it's, you know, our ability as a school district to actually change that, you know, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm just a student, I just. I don't know if you guys actually have the ability to, you know, make that change in the classroom. But if it's not you guys and if it's the state, this resolution, make a, will make a stance that districts around you might follow. We'll put pressure on the state to make those changes that we'll see in the classroom. And I think, I think that's what this resolution is, is acknowledging that we're not there yet, making that powerful statement that'll inspire neighboring districts to do the same. And eventually we have a movement behind us that catches enough, you know, speed, that the state falls suit. Now, that's what this is. It's, it's meeting the moment. It's.
So Ben, I had, um, uh, jump in for a second because, um. As Matt so eloquently shared his perspective, and I think what the board is wrestling, I so appreciate Karen and Jill's perspective of working. Alongside teachers who are very dedicated to equity, looking at the curriculum that's there. And, and Matt, you're being bolder and stronger to say, but what, what should it be? Um, in terms of, you know, go after Pearson or anyone else who is providing curriculum for us to choose from. And Zenia, I'm gonna invite you into this conversation as the students have shared their perspective, because I saw, um. That you and Dr. McCall have made a comment. So I, I wonder to try to meet the needs. Because this is where I wrestle, Matt, and, and, and we are getting messy and I love the honesty to have this conversation and you all are adults. And so you're mature enough to, to really push for what you believe in and, and hear my perspective, that we have committed teachers. Spending hours and hours and hours reviewing curriculum and how do we bring that in, but it's not perfect. So what I'm trying to balance as a board chair is I hear you and, and we need to not have the largest, you know, states in the country. Drive what curriculum looks like or anything else. So how do we acknowledge we have to do better? I am right there with you. But I also, I'm not gonna throw staff under the bus, um, because it's not accessible. And that's what's tugging at my heart. And, and so I wanna do what's right and I'm gonna look to Zenia to help me land where we need to.
So, um, I appreciate, again, us leaning into the art of community and making sure that we listen to one another so that we make meaning. So I think that what I'm hearing from students is that we need to be very clear about, um. The fact that we have not done it. Cause if, if we haven't, if we did, then we, we wouldn't have this conversation. So, um, my offering is that with the statement where it says the district affirms the value and, uh, importance of curriculum that represents the diversity. Of our community, state and country, um, and accurately honors the contributions of historically marginalized communities, I would say. And we acknowledge our current curriculum does not achieve that consistently across settings to systematize. The use of an equity lens for current and future curriculum, um, or maybe current curriculum. So I feel like that then highlights the. We have not done it systematically and across all settings, but that doesn't, um, e- uh, that doesn't take away the fact that there might have been. Um, work that has done, that has addressed some of those pieces. Because really, when you talk about equity work and you talk about systems change, you have to talk about how the system moves in, uh, co- in a coherent. And in sync with one another so that we, like I said earlier on in our B and T meeting, is that. Uh, disconnected system is an equi- an inequitable system. So when you, uh, get more aligned, that's when you have. A more, um, equitable system because you're, you're aligned as a system. Um, so those are some operations. Doctor McCall also said, can we state that our district has not yet achieved that? And it is what we aspire to. So those are some options that we will offer, um, as a way to honor, um, the complexity of, I think, what we're, uh. The tension that we're feeling right now.
Okay, so what I'm hearing then from Dr. McCall is that it's that adding that yet and that we aspire to it. And so there's part of me that feels like it acknowledges Stalin is, and I know. You guys, you, it may not be what you want perfectly, but, but this is what we do. I, I mean, because you also want. I know that all of us, I'm not gonna speak for you all, but I'm, I'm just showing like we all want this and we wanna stand behind it. Um, but we also want to honor, um, uh, some work that, that people that are on our side, right? That are there trying to support what you guys want to accomplish. So, um, so what, I, I like what Dr. McCall said. Just because I think it was just a couple of words, um, to what is already written, if I understood it, yet does not yet that achieved and that we aspire.
Or even just, I just think yet is in that growth mindset is because we're, we, we wanna get there and we aspire to. We don't even have to include if you don't want to, it is what we aspire to. But I just think adding that, the word yet. It's, it's like we're, we are on the track, there's a long way to go. And, uh, what I wanna share with the students, your, your voice, your voice is in your input is powerful. I've just spent the last five years completing a disre- dissertation around exclusionary practices. And, uh, implications on the policy, uh, around, uh, policy from a district and leader's perspective. And one of the things that I outline as a next step is that we need stakeholder input to do this work. We can't do it alone. And as we do have committed staff that are, are, uh, on that road, we need all, we need our stakeholders, we need our students. And one of the things I highlighted, um, one of my mentors is, uh, um. Jerome Howard, who he says, like, steward voice without it, um, everything is incomplete. And so again, I wanna thank the students because you are pushing us and we need to, we need to be pushed. Thank you.
I would just like to weigh in here and say, I mean, I'm thinking a lot about what Matt just said. And I'm thinking a little bit about what Jill just said about how, you know, we can only approve what is, what is available to us. And, I mean, it strikes me as that maybe us passively participating in what is harming our students. And if we say something like recommit to a system that isn't working, like what happens if we use an equity lens and we, and we can't find curriculum that we believe. Uh, is sufficient and does an accurate job of telling, uh, the history of this country and incorporating the contributions of underserved students. If, if our equity lens yields a result that is not equitable, then that's a problem. And I think the purpose of the resolution is to actually, it should be an earthquake, right? This should be, uh, this should be a significant shift in the way we do business. I think that's the point of what is happening around the world and around our country. And it feels to me like what we're trying to do here is sort of make everyone happy and make, um, everyone feel included, which I, I, I don't wanna make people feel. Unhappy and excluded, but what I want is for the resolution to, uh, to really shift our course a little bit. Um, and I don't know, I'm, I'm sorry if that's not clear, but I'm, I'm just trying to, to apply what I'm hearing Matt and others say. To the, the policy work in front of us.
And, and Director Bowman, I appreciate that. So I will give you a nuts and bolts relative to Division twenty-two, um, that may, may provide, um, a path forward here. Um, and, um, and that is, uh. If you are able, if you cannot find a curriculum that, that you believe, um, ma- meets the needs, uh, and the way in which you as a district wish to teach. You may, um, develop your own, um, but you have to be able to demonstrate that it is aligned to the state standards. That is the key. And so if there is something that is in a box and that comes from Pearson or the, the usual suspects that every state has as vendors. But the district says, no, we wish to go a different direction. We're going to create it and we can demonstrate on audit that it meets those standards. We can go that, the district can go that direction. And that, that's what saved many of us during the Great Compression, um, and Recession. Was the fact that, um, in fact, I led an effort in Salem Kaiser to do just exactly that. Um, because we did not have the money to align to the common core state standards and we took what was available in front of us and we crafted our own curriculum. So that is very much a path forward and available to us, um, as part of this, um, and may actually serve. To, uh, provide direction, um, a- and offer to O D E as they are doing Indigenous people work. So peoples' work and, and curriculum. So too, to Matt's point, we have an opportunity to bring teams together. Um, and say, okay, if this curriculum isn't it, then what are the, you know, what is the urgency that we need to address? And how can we, um, craft, um, a curriculum, um, that is based on standards? That addresses these, the very issues that Matt is talking about and includes, um, these very difficult pieces but necessary pieces that need to be taught. Um, and so, um, I, I would offer that to you as from a technical perspective.
Thank you for that, Doctor. That actually, I think, sheds a little light for me on a possible path forward, which is. We should give a charge to the Curriculum Adoption Committee that if there is ever a curriculum that is insufficient, but is the best that there have been offered. That we have this district pathway where we can, uh, build our own, that we think better meets the needs.
And I would also share with you, Director Bowman, that that is, uh, at, at least a year-long process, if not longer. And so there is, you're just from, again, I only offer that as a technical perspective. That's not where we are this evening, but that is also a consideration and a cost to the district. And then, and then there are attending costs to that relative to how you roll that out and all the rest of that. It's just a, it is just a data point that I share with you this evening as you were, are elevating this resolution.
And I just wanna offer again, since the student's resolution was to highlight anti-racism and also anti-racist curriculum. Um, I wanna offer to folks that it's a presence of whiteness to think that the curriculum is a, an all, end-all deal. It requires the adaptive work of teachers to be able to work through that using an equity lens. So I wanna offer that as well, cause I don't want us to get stuck. In the, 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 the context of a curriculum, because that will never be the answer, if it's repackaged and so forth. So it, 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 uh, this is all of us to make sure that we invest in those, uh, adaptive components as well as like. Uh, culturally responsive and, and, uh, relevant, uh, pedagogy to ensure that teachers know how to scaffold and also speak truth to the curriculum. So I don't want to get stuck on the curriculum because that is one way for us to, um, stick, uh, stay stuck in our, our looping of whiteness.
No, I appreciate that, Zenia. In fact, um, I think that it can say, to be said that a, a really good teacher. With cultural competence can point to, you know, blatantly racist curriculum and use that very. Lacking in the curriculum as a really great tool for learning, to teach, um, to teach students. Even when the curriculum is maybe not ideal. But anyway, I'm getting way off into the weeds now and I should probably.
So I wanna, um, I wanna circle back. I have to say, I, I do appreciate, even if we stick to we commit, right? Not a recommit, but I do like yet, um, I still think that honors that we're not there. Um, and I think that is aspirational as, in terms of what a resolution is to hope what is our goal. I do agree with Zenia. I do think, um, the instructional practices, your pedagogy, all that really matters. It's a lot about the teacher's passion in the classroom and what they opt to bring in, um, and share. And I recognize some of the constraints around, here's the curriculum and I gotta hit standards and I gotta hit something before the end of the year. Um, but I think that we can be mindful of that as we do the detail work, as we go forward. Um, so Kavee gives, given me a thumbs up. So I would like to, um, suggest we add the yet. Um, to acknowledge, um, that component and then we work on the, the pedi- pedagogy later. Or not later, but you guys know what I mean, in the details, which there's gonna be a lot. Um, so Director Emerson, Director Zertzme, would that be reasonable to the two of you who have raised a, a curriculum question? Director Fox, um, thoughts?
So, um, what I was wondering is, um, what is, we passed a hate speech statement on February tenth. And I was, so what, what are the implications for that, um, which contains a lot of the same things as this does? So is that negate that, uh, the, uh, February tenth, um, statement? And have, has everybody read it, I guess? Has everybody, students, Kavee, Matt, Obdi, have you read the hate speech statement? So, um, I just wondered, cause we do have a June, we, we even put a deadline in there, right? And I know that the COVID thing messed up because we went from proving that statement to, um. You know, the S I A work, which is pretty intensive. We were trying to get it done before spring break and now, uh, then we went into quarantine. So, um, you know, I felt like we kinda had to put everything on pause, but, um.
Oh, I have a thought. Cause you said that we passed it on February ten and my memory is that, um, it was in a workshop session.
So I have to admit from a process perspective and, and I talked to Patty about that, I, I, um, could not find, I, I agree. I don't think it was an action that we voted on. It was work in, um, a session. I'm not sure that it went out. What I'd like to say, Director Fox, to your question, is I believe the language in the resolution is much more specific. And direct to where we are today. And what I would like to see is we go back and look at what were the technical. Kind of A R-like activities in my mind, um, how did those get married into the work? Um, that needs to operationalize what we say here. But I think in the current climate that we're in. The language that is here is way more specific and, um, just really speaks to the hearts and minds. Of where people are right now. That's my two, my two cents, or three, whatever I'm rambling.
Well, so I, I appreciate that, Maureen. I know that times have changed, but, um. You know, I, there's a lot more detail in here because that's the world in which we live. I mean, that's, this work is hard, as you know. And when you're talking about hate speech, it gets messy really fast. And, um, you know, when we develop this. I reviewed case law for eight hours on a Saturday and talked to, you know, OSBA lawyers and whatnot. And so, and counselors and administration and, um, security officers and took all the. Took all the, and so Ben and I wrote it together. And um, so I guess I'm a little bit um disappointed that. There wasn't a, uh, an attempt to dovetail that work that we already did. We put a lot of work into it, couple of work sessions and. It feels rather like that wasn't good enough and so now we're gonna yell it even farther and higher than we did before. And so it just, it seems, um. Uh, redundant, hon- honestly, seems like we've done this work in terms of almost everything is covered. But with the exception of curriculum, which I completely agree with, um, but I, I just, I don't understand why we didn't dovetail that work together. Other than just ignoring that it happened.
So Sharon, I, I, um, I'll respond to it and I'll be quiet. So um, Director Bowman, Emerson, and Zertzmeat can um comment. I don't, I, I think it's actually really important work. And I'm not saying that this gets put into file thirteen and not leveraged. That's not at all what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, again, what's a resolution? This wasn't a resolution. This was a letter to the community that I'm not sure. Has been fully shared with some very specific action items. What I believe in the resolution is a call to action. This is what we hope to do in terms of action. I think they're um apples and oranges, in my opinion, right now. So I don't wanna devalue the hard work that you and Ben did. I think it's a reflection and we use it as, as something that we. Um, leverage as we go forward on how, how do we do the work? And you're right, it's gonna, if this is messy, it's gonna get really messy. Um, but anyway, I'll be quiet. Ben, Karen, Jill?
Yeah, I, I think I would, I, I, my thinking is pretty well aligned with Maureen's on this. I um, I think of them as two different things. One was a communication out and part, and part of the, I'm trying to pull it up now so I can directly reference it, but. My computer is, oh, there we go. I mean. I guess, I guess where I'm at and what my thinking is that it wasn't sufficient and it didn't go far enough. And I think what I would point to in the resolution is the commitment to work towards being an anti-racist school district, which is a totally new. Thought that we've introduced that I think um, that's, that's the part that I think is unique among school districts and unique. Among responses to what's happening. And um, to Zinnia's point, uh, one of the most challenging things before us because of. How much systems level change that will, will be required to make that come to fruition. And um, you know, and I'll let the students speak here if they'd want to, but what I kept hearing consistently was we had all these conversations, we had all these listening sessions. And there was an overwhelming call for a policy adoption on hate speech and it hadn't happened. Um, so I think one of the other points of this resolution is to put in stone that we're committing to, to making that happen. So that's kind of how I think about it.
Well, I, I think just, I, I wanna let students comment, but I just wanted to say that we did agree that we would look at our hate. So O S B A. They say we, everything's covered. I mean, the law is there to support um, uh, enforcing. Um, I don't know how you say, anti-hate speech. Um, but uh, the laws are all there and so. Um, we agreed to take a look and see if there was gas or anything. So all I'm saying is that we did talk about that. So um. Uh, it's all, it's, the challenge is on the enforcement of it. And that's where I think I really appreciate um. Students here and um just the challenges, right? You see these things happening and it's not enforced. And I've also heard from the teachers. So I mean, I think there's this kind of A R uh issue that uh, Dr. Smith went into earlier, that. The challenge. And I guess, um, I, I just wanna say, um, I wanted to, um. The, this, this book I read, and I don't wanna, you know, uh. Get a dead horse, but it, it, it's, it's about the um civil rights lawyers um in the south. That went to the south. They weren't southern, they weren't southern attorneys. They were actually attorneys from all over the world. And they volunteered. Um, they were called the um, name of their, um, the national. There, there had, they had a name, National Committee on Civil Rights, um, something. Anyway, they, they went around um the south, particularly Mississippi, because. They had the biggest violations of the uh fourteenth and fifteenth amendments. And the um, uh, the civil rights um, uh, law that passed nineteen fifty-four. And, oh, they were called the Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights under the law. Um, and so when I was reading this book. Um, what it does, it covers all the cases that these lawyers uh covered in Mississippi particularly. And it's, it's incredible history because there's all the facts, people, um, victims, the, the, um. The racist, everything the Ku Klux Klan and uh talk about history for class, this would be awesome. But um, I, I wanted to say that as, as I was reading it, um. It struck me that uh we have, we had the law in Mississippi to protect black Americans. But locally, um, there was so much racism and correction that the laws were ignored. Um, and it, it struck me because, you know, there was so much, the Ku Klux Klan had control of it so much, but um. What, what stood out to me is that it was a local, it was a local battle and people had to hand up to that. And I, I guess what I view myself as, I govern Tiger Twelve as a school district and this is where, the area that. I can influence and, and um, have an impact on. So, um. Uh, I can impact policy change, affect strategy, make budget decisions. Um, and we've been doing that over the past three years. Um, and I guess the frustrating thing is this, to me, there's nothing new to this resolution, for the exception of the, the curriculum piece, which um. I, I think we can, I love the ideas here, but stuff we're already working on. And um, the, the. Anyway, so the, the policy, the strategies, policies, statements that we had, we are passing um are really useless without local people. Um, such as teachers, students. I'm standing up and um, I know, I don't say this rightly, cause it's hard to do. Um, but uh, I guess. I would rather, I, I guess I would rather see, feel like the board doing our work, districts doing our work by passing this. I feel it's a little bit of an insult to all the people doing the work, because it's been hard. And I would much rather see, honestly, is a petition. A petition with all the people that sign the petition, I, I, I get you have a petition, I, I think that's great, but. I would rather see the petition say, here's my commitment to change. Here's what I'm gonna do every day I'm at school. It was with teachers and with students. And so, um, those are my two cents and, and I. I do appreciate the students who are speaking up and their passion. And I know it's been a difficult couple of weeks and a lot of reflection, but. Um, uh, I just, I want all, all of us to do the change. And I feel like this is at such a high level. That all we're doing is, is doing more of the same without really getting, let's, let's put our attention to where it's gonna make a difference and not the A R. Been raising my hand for a while.
Uh, one thing that we should, that we need to consider is that like having this on the highest level, I'm, I, I will go back to the point, is accountability. So like, we can do a whole bunch of things on this topic and like, we can like try to fix as many things as we want after, but this, this like resolution right now gives us accountability. Like now, like let's say my little sister in two years comes up to me, she's like, Abdi, nothing has changed in the district of what is going on, you passed the resolution. I can come back and be like, hey, you guys promised that you guys would have a hate speech policy, you guys promised you'd be an anti-racist school district. You guys promised that you guys would make it better. And you guys did it. So that's an accountability and not just, just for like the district. So I wouldn't say, like, I wouldn't go to the point of like specifically trying to say like, oh, this, this is like at the top, like not adjusting it locally, cause like. Having something at the top holds everybody else accountable.
Um, so could he raise his hand? And then Matt also had his hand, so you, could he go ahead and then Matt follow him, please?
So pretty much in Oregon, there was that law that passed like when, uh, sorry, can't speak, banning plastic straws. And I'm like, I think the intent in like passing that law was not that, um, not that banning plastic straws is magically gonna like. Solve climate change or anything like that, but it's more of setting that precedent and just the idea of like when, when the government like puts. When it, when lawmakers or decision makers like the school board passes something. Um, it's sort of, it's not just the law itself or the um resolution itself, but it's sort of. Um, like when that thing is passed, it's sort of like has like a echoing effect. Um, just like if. I'm not articulating this very well, but um, it's just in the way that law was passed, it's, it's not gonna solve climate change. But it sort of gets people to be more conscious of like all of their little actions that they're doing. And I think that's sort of what like. Um, passing, passing a resolution like this would do at the school board level.
Thanks, Kevi. Matt, go ahead. And mute yourself, Matt.
I've done that. Oh my gosh, it's the first time I've done that. I pride myself in what I can never do. That is the first time.
Just Matt, sorry.
Oh my gosh, okay, wow. Well, I just wanna. Well, I just wanna like reiterate, like, Kevi, I'm really happy you said that, cause like I was thinking along the same lines too, like another way I like to reimagine it is that. Like you think of like, you know, you're driving in like neighborhood or in any area with like a speed bump. You know, it's not like a speed bump is gonna stop every single person from uh driving fast, but it's, it's an attempt. At making people more conscious about their decisions, making people more conscious of like how they are driving. Um, of course, there's gonna be every other or very few amount of people that disregard the speed bump and drive fast anyways. But at least we have put a system in place that makes people more conscious of, you know, what they're doing. And I think, uh, like I really like that and Kevi too, like more recently with, you know, the plastic straw. I like that way of thinking that. This resolution, we know is not gonna solve, you know, systemic racism and T T S D. But it's gonna, it's, it's, it's about making a commitment that we're more conscious about these things that are going on in our schools. Uh, about recognizing our failures and realizing that we can no longer close the blinds on things that are happening around the world. And just pretend like they're not happening in, in our district, because they are. And I, I, I am proud of people that have made those attempts and. I, I recognize that we don't wanna turn our backs on people that have attempted to make great progress in things like curriculum. There are people that are working hard every day to change those pieces. And I, I do, I recognize that as a student. But I, I, I find, I have a problem with. What Director Fox had just mentioned about wanting to see a petition where all the same people that signed the first petition. Commit to changing what they do every day in school, that I have to commit to holding my teachers accountable in the classroom. Or anything like that. I, that's, that's not my role as a student. That's my role is to come, come and learn and do my homework and get involved and participate. Um, and not have to, and not have to be overly conscious about whether or not what I'm learning. Is pertaining to whatever history that I'm missing out on. Um, that's, that's just my issue, is that this, that's not my role as a student. And rather, this resolution is. To make the district and people that work with the district more conscious about what's going on in the district. And like Abdi said, that. We have something to hold ourselves accountable. Not just now, but when there's future leaders and taking on the charge of this district. But they can look back to this moment right now that we said that we as a district are gonna hold ourselves accountable. That's all I got.
So Matt, the one thing I would say, because when I listened to um Director Fox share that, what I thought about. Was what is your role peer-to-peer? And I think that you all had worked really hard with Unity Day. And I remember having that conversation with Sarah when we had one of our hate speech work sessions at Bridgeport. Because Sarah was kind of that same push and, and I remember my response to Sarah was, but what is that call to action amongst yourselves, right? So when you hear a comment made to Abdi or another student of color, that it's like, hey, you, you know, come on. Um, and I know that's really simple for me to, you know, to, to throw out there and I, I, um, I would hope. That Unity Day could be a kickoff event. We talked about that, right? If you all are even still here before you fly off to your wonderful new. Um, experiences in college, right? That that sets the foundation, that that's how we start a school year. And that's peer-to-peer, and that is a critical piece as well. And that is your role, Matt, and I think you would agree with that. So. Um, uh, so, okay. Um, well, I, I really feel that we could go back and forth. Um, for another hour and um, I look to the board members, since it is a board resolution. Um, and I think that um, all of us have had an opportunity to share. I would like to offer up adding yet. To the curriculum paragraph, um, as a, as a singular modification. Um, and so at this point, um, I will look for, oh, Jill, go ahead.
A, a couple of things, cause there's, I haven't had a chance to ask any questions about other parts of the resolution. It is a board resolution and I'm the one who's saying this is what we believe. I wanna make sure that I understand the logic behind it. So two things, one is extraordinarily minor. I'm an editor. I cannot in good conscience. Approve a resolution that I know has a grammatical mistake in it. And so, um, in the incidents of racism paragraph. It needs to be incidents of racism are happening not just in other parts of the United States. They are happening right here, not. Incidents of racisms are not just happening. The, the not just has to move. That's just my stupid edit, but. I, I, I feel strongly about that, but.
Just so I can see it now.
Incidents of racism are happening not just in other parts of the United States. It's a misplaced modifier.
Got it. Okay, go ahead.
But I have a question, when you guys were drafting this, why in the opening paragraph. You talk only about the deaths of black people in the last thirty days? Because when I read that, what I see. Is a, an immediate reaction to the most current events. Instead of a resolution that is addressing the whole history of racism in this country, and I think about Freddie Gray, I think about. Rodney King, I mean, that was probably before your time, but you know, I remember that stuff. So I wanna get a sense of what your thinking was there. So. Whoever's got their hand up, you can answer that.
Yeah, I think this is just, that piece is to recognize, um. You know, why everybody is out in the street marching right now and that it wasn't just because these three occasions, which I wanna say weren't in the last. You know, thirty days, Ahmaud Arbery was murdered the second to last week of February, Breonna Taylor, March thirteenth. But I just wanna say that these three events specifically were catalysts, you know, kind of like that whole enough is enough. That the events that you mentioned, you know, mentioned earlier, Freddie Gay, Ronnie, Ronnie King, uh, even up, you know, to Michael. You could go on and on. And I think that's the point we're making is that you can go on and on. We have to recognize in those instances in like. Conjugate with this, it's like, that's the gasoline, that's, you know, what's spilling all over. And these three murders, the three names that everybody's shouting on the streets, what we're saying when say their names. These three names that come up are the ones that spark the torch. It's why everybody is uh paying attention because of these instances of injustice. Um, I think that's, you know, the.
And I appreciate that, but I would push back and say, the resolution has more power if it's not just. A reaction to the last three deaths. Because quite honestly, in another, you know, month or two, there'll probably be another one. And it'll be just horrible, right? But it's the historical systemic racism. That, yes, we've just gotten to the point of saying enough is enough. Some of us were saying enough is enough ten years ago and twenty years ago. But we weren't being heard. Um, I just, I worry that it elevates these three. And it pushes down the memory of a whole lot of other people who also died unfairly.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, um, I don't know how we wanna change the language around it, but I think that was what I was quite, I was like, our initial. Thought process behind it was like, this is what's gaslighting the current situation.
Kevi, go ahead.
Um, and in my view, that like second piece, like right underneath it, um, uh, addresses just that. I don't, I don't know if it reads off the same line to everyone, but um, it's saying like mass protesting and all of that is taking place sort of like in response to those three deaths. Um, and it, it says, um. We cannot reme- continue to remain silent or complacent about racial injustice, but decades of systemic oppression. And abuses have reached a tipping point. So I think, to me, when I, I read it, um. It was like those three deaths just led us to a tipping point, so that's why we're acting now, because we failed so to do, we failed to do so before. Uh, so that's how I read it. I don't know if, um, anyone has a different view on that, but yeah.
Thank you, Kevi. So, so Jill, given um, the second paragraph. I, I mean, I, I suppose you could add something in the first paragraph that, you know, extends, you know, years, decades, you name it. Centuries. Um, but I, I guess I would agree with Kevi. I think that that transitions into the second paragraph to acknowledge. Um, the challenges. So I'm fine, but Karen, Sharon? um the challenges. So I'm fine with Karen, Sharon on that particular issue. And then Jill, I don't know if you're gonna get to your okay or not. You actually were unmuted and now you just muted yourself.
Oh, I thought you were calling on Karen and Sharon to talk, so that's why I was muting myself. I'm sorry. I, I misunderstood whose turn it was to talk. Um, I just, I think we're calling out the individual names makes it less. Because a resolution is gonna stand for years. Um, I just, if I were writing it, I would have left that out and had instead a, 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 a sentence that describes the long history of people of color, blacks in particular, suffering violence at the hands of police. And it's reached the tipping point. I like Kavi's uh concern uh about that, that it leads into the second paragraph with the tipping point. Um, I see, uh, Assistant Superintendent McCall's uh suggesting that we start with the third paragraph. And that's not a bad idea.
I would just like to point out, though, that, uh, this conversation would not be happening if those three black Americans weren't murdered. That's the reality.
Absolutely, absolutely. I agree with you there, but that doesn't mean they have to be in the resolution. We've had lots of resolutions in the past where we don't necessarily have to call out the name of the person who precipitated the crisis.
What I would say, I would not be comfortable removing those names from the resolution. And in fact, I think if you look at some of the corporate, the sort of out of touch corporate statements, the ones that are getting blasted are the ones who are refusing to actually acknowledge um the deaths of those individuals who precipitated this, this outrage that we're seeing. So I, I have a strong preference to keeping those names in, um, and just wanted to express that.
Director Emerson, Director Fox, and I will pause long enough for you to actually respond.
I understood the first two paragraphs to go together and, um, but yeah, the tipping point for the, um, there's another expression, there's another expression. I can't think of it, but I am, I am fine with keeping both of them there.
Critical man. Yeah, um, yeah. Uh, Director Fox, did you wanna make a comment or pass? Okay, um, okay. So I think, um, we're gonna move forward, and I hope that's not a deal breaker, directors or to me, cuz.
Not at all.
Okay, um, so, uh, Director Zertzme, did you have other comments? I appreciate the conversation.
Uh, the rest of, no. It, I, I have to take a hard time with this because it's a board resolution, it's the board's work, and it was not written by the board. And it's not the words that the board would have said, and it's being handed to us as this is what you should say. And I appreciate the advice and I, I, I appreciate the voices because they're voices that I wouldn't be able to come up with. But at the same time, it's hard to just say, yeah, okay. For one thing, the district's, uh, third to final paragraph, the district commits to adopting a hate speech policy. District doesn't adopt policy. That's the board. So, right there, and not really.
Okay, Matt, you, you hold on a second. So, Jill, that can be changed to the board commits. That's an easy fix, right? Um, because I appreciate that. So that's a technical, like, that's not the job of the district, job of the board. So I agree with that. Ben gave me a thumbs up, and I'm sure on that point Karen and Sharon would. Um, and you know, um, I appreciate what you said, Jill. And I will say that, as you all know, it takes two board members to bring something forward on an agenda. And Ben, clearly, uh, worked in conjunction with the students, brought it forward. I consider myself the second. And this week, um, as Obdi, Matt, Kavee, Dr. Sue, Ben, Zinnia, Dr. McCall, um, Amber, um, know that we went back and forth, um, a fair amount to try to find language um, that landed on a statement, a bold statement, and said that we wanted to be different and we wanted to lead. So, um, I guess my perspective is I've been part of this conversation. So that is unlike, you know, the three of you who haven't. Um, but you also know how the board works. We're not back together again for two more weeks. So, the, a- and things have been crazy. So unfortunately, you guys didn't get, you know, four or five days to reflect, review. Here are my edits, here are my recommendations. We're doing this, you know, real time. Um, so I honor and I respect that, Jill, and I had the, the, um, opportunity to process this for the last week. Uh, but I think what I'm hearing is that there's just an opportunity to move forward. And Zinnia, you just popped up and, um, I will let you share your perspective and your experience this week as well. Um, and I get it, Zinnia is not a board member either, but I think as we let students share their perspectives, Zinnia's been very much, um, an advisor. Um, and certainly one for me, um, as well as, um, Dr. Lisa, Dr. Sue, and Amber as we try to, you know, craft this as a collective statement. So, Zinnia, go ahead.
So, um, I just wanted to say, I think, uh, goes back to the comment, you know, what's the difference between this resolution versus the community letter? And I wanna say I respect and honor the work that, um, you know, uh, Director Bowman and Director Fox have done. One of the things that I, um, do wanna highlight is that, um, what I got from the resolution and what I know to be true for sustainable change is that when you activate student voice, um, that's how you sustain change, because that you're talking about, uh, future generations. One thing that I wanna offer as well is that, um, the resolution gave me hope as a teacher of color that, um, when I step out and I step, uh, in, in for our students of color, our, um, students in the margins, um, because our students push them there sometimes, is that, um, I will not get, uh, I will not fear doing that because I know that my board, um, is supporting me. And, um, by sitting in the, um, the meetings that we were at before, it was important for us to understand the head and the heart um, a, a response to the resolution, because I also know that my union will support me. As a teacher of color, um, you know, being in a predominantly white union, I have feared, um, you know, retribution. And so how do I get that support from the board, the, the district, as well as my union, to make sure that when I step up and step in for, um, interrupting racism in our, in our district, that it's taken seriously and I don't have to fear for my job? So, what I get from this resolution is that, um, there's that hope that that can be, uh, we can work towards being an anti-racist, um, institution, but that requires ongoing active work. And, um, so that's where, those are my, those are my perspectives as, uh, and I, I just wanna offer that to the group.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
So Jill, I, um, I directed. Um, I just, um, I, I just wanna say I, I'm struggling also, um, because um, the district has, I think, done some amazing, um, communication with our community. And, um, put a lot of effort into how it's crafted, what's said. Um, because, um, you know, with all the protests, there's a lot of different opinions about everything. And, um, not to say that, um, that we're, I mean, I, I stand by what we're doing, but often the way you say it can trigger people or it can be gain more agreement. And so, um, I'm struggling with this, um, as well, just, um, and I don't feel it's consistent with, um, our path, our communication that the district has, has sent out. So, um, I'm struggling as well. And I, and I am, I, I continue to be disappointed that, you know, we dropped the word of the hate speech statement.
So, Obdi, I'm gonna, um, I think that we need to, um, I, I, so two things, Obdi, I'm gonna let you speak. Um, and then I'm gonna let Obdi be the last student, um, to speak. And I really do feel that all thoughts have been shared, and I appreciate the honesty and what isn't at ease at this. And I think, um, Ben, do you have the, I think there's, um, we're gonna add yet, not just, um.
Yeah, I've been taking.
Yeah, I think it's three modifications. So, then I will have you, oh, go ahead, and then I'll, I'll, I'll be, I'll have you close, and then we'll circle back to board final comment.
Just real technical, um, at, um, our recommendation, I added Metzger, um, to Tiger, Tolden, King, City Durham, and Metzger. Um, and I also, as I, as, um, Zinnia was speaking earlier, I also added, um, affirms the value and importance of culturally responsive pedagogy and instructional practices and of curriculum. But I, well, it wasn't clear to me what, uh, we wanted that included or not, so I took notes and put it in, but uncomfortable. I think it strengthens, strengthens it, but I'm okay with whatever.
Oh, I, I, I think that's what Doctor Sue said early on, and I agree with that. I think so much of it's about, yeah. So I'm, I am good with that, um, but Obdi, uh, again, always so very patient, um, there with your hand. So, um, go ahead, give us your last thoughts, and then we'll circle around the board and we'll go to a motion.
Um, there's the one, there's one last, I mean, statement I just wanted to say. So, a couple of days ago, we have this Black Student Union chat, right? And then like, I'm sitting there, right, and I'm the president of the Black Student Union, I'm sitting there, and all these, all these students are asking me, Obdi, what are we gonna do? Obdi, what are we gonna do? Obdi, where do we go? You know, and as the president of the Black Student Union, I don't have the answers to all those questions, you know? And I feel like, I feel like what I told them, I said, I said, I'm working on this resolution for the board, and hopefully it goes through. The, that, I wouldn't say the excitement, but the joy of the understanding that something was finally happening, happening. Like, it was the first time that I ever felt like, wow, I'm actually doing something. And like, I understand, this didn't come like, like, this didn't come from like, like a typical board resolution, but the thing is, is this situation is not typical. This is the first time that everybody is, like, trying to join and like, like, come together on this cause of racism. It's like, it's like, it's outstanding, I got all I can say. But, um, I just wanna say right now, I'm gonna go back to it, this is it, be right here. And you get to ch- decide which side of history you wanna be.
All right, thank you, Obdi. Um, so, board members, any other comments? Otherwise, I will move to, uh, Dr. Ridgie Smith, is there anything you wanna add before we move to a motion?
No, except to urge you that I think you are, you are ready to, to have a motion in a second and, and, and get to the vote.
Yeah, um, okay. All right, Director Bowman. Um, Ben, you're on mute.
Sorry, my computer froze up when I was trying to open the resolution.
Oh, yeah, no, we're just on mute.
Uh, are you asking me to weigh in or, or to make the motion?
I think this is, and so I wanna hear that you tracked all the modifications, so.
Yeah, I've got all the modifications and I'm happy to make the motion. I move that the Board of Directors approved Resolution nineteen twenty dash nineteen condemning all forms of racism, committing T T S D to working to be an actively anti-racist school district, and committing to pass a hate speech policy prior to the start of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year as presented.
No, it says modified, right?
As modified, excuse me.
Um, and so, Director Bowman, would you just for, because we're voting on it, um, walk through the modifications as you have recorded them?
Yep, let me, I didn't, um, highlight them, so I'm gonna have to go through here. Uh, I added Metzger on the bottom of the first page to the list of communities. I added in the, in the resolved section, I added, the district affirms the value and importance of culturally responsive pedagogy, instructional practices, and of curriculum that represents at the beginning of that. And I made Jill's change to have something about happening. Incidents of racism are happening not just in other parts of the United States. That's at the bottom of the first page as well. Um, I think those paragraphs, and I added yet. Sorry, I'm skipping around all of the place I.
And board instead of district, adopting the ball.
Yes, all of those changes have been recorded.
Yeah, so I think there's five changes. So, uh, the not just, Metzger, board instead of district, yet the pedagogy, which I'm gonna lead to the Ben's language, I don't have that exact. Um, and so, board members, for the sake of what the motion is and the modifications, do we understand what those are? Are there questions? Okay. Um, so Ben has made a motion. Do I have a second?
A second?
Okay. Motion was made by Director Bowman and seconded by Director Emerson to, um, approve draft, uh, resolution nineteen twenty dash nineteen as modified. Any further discussion?
I'd like, I'd like to make a comment, um, if I may. I'd like to, um, to take the pledge that I just asked um, others to take, and that's, um, especially for the students here. And I just wanna say that, um, I'm going to educate myself on issues. I'm going to seek opportunities for bridge building within our schools and community. I'm gonna surround myself with diversity more than I have been, to listen, learn from minorities, have so much to offer us. Take, notice and take responsibilities for negative stereotypes, biases, anything I may hold, acknowledge the truth, stand as an ally for the marginalized, and model reconciliation in my own relationship. And I wanna give credit to Latasha Morrison, Be the Bridge, author of Be the Bridge. Um, I adapted, I took those from her book and, um, adapted them to be a little shorter. But I just wanted to comment on that, that I'm taking that pledge myself.
Thank you, Director Fox, and, um, I agree with that. I not have the language in front of me. Uh, so I won't attempt to repeat very powerful orders. And I also wanna acknowledge, um, Zinnia has done some tremendous framing and very detailed next steps. And so, I really do feel there's a framework that has been built that really speaks to a lot of those details. How do we educate? How do we really move this work forward? And I really wanna recognize, um, Zinnia for all that work. Um, so she really is creating a path for us to move forward on that. Um, any other comments? Okay, so, roll call again. Director Bowman.
Aye.
Director Emerson.
Aye.
Director Fox.
Aye.
Director Zertzme.
Aye.
Director Wolf is an aye. Motion, um, passes. Um, so, uh, Obdi, uh, Kavee, and I think I have Patty now instead of Matt, but, um, thank you all, uh, very much. And Zinnia and Dr. McCall and Amber as well. So, um, we will move on to our next item on, um, the agenda. Thanks, you guys. Director Wolf.
For a three-minute recess.
Yes, please.
Um, and let's, well, I'm gonna give us five. Um, so, um, motion, uh, was made by Director Emerson, seconded by Director Fox, uh, to convene, or have a recess at eight forty-two, reconvene at eight forty-seven. So. Okay. Hey Patty. Since we're not here, I have to supply my own chocolate. Oh, Kathy, there it is, my own chocolate.
If you were here. Well, I'm at the office, so I grabbed some. I knew I did some stuff then. Chocolate, you want chocolate? They said the benefits of, of meeting at home is that, you know, alcohol is allowed on the presence. I said after that conversation, you know, a little swig of bourbon would not add along. But don't tell the kids.
I'll stick to chocolate for now.
Well, I mean, it's chocolate.
Chocolate.
I'm sorry, I'm falling down on my duties, not making sure you all have chocolate. This is my bad. I apologize.
Okay, I packed my own, man.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know, so you could be, you know, your job could be in trouble. I know. Do you have a contract yet? I'm telling you, I just. I am going out.
I got chocolate. Thank you Patty, Thea gave it to me.
I gotta bond now, okay?
See? We've all made you Patty. We, we miss your five, but we, we had to fend for ourselves. See Karen eating chocolate, I can tell.
Oh, my job's in jeopardy.
Oh, my gosh. All right. Well, let's see.
I wouldn't worry about that, Patty.
Um, one, two, three, four, five, and it is eight forty-seven, so I will reconvene, um, as to our action items, and we are on item B, elementary science adoption, uh, curriculum recommendation. Director Watson, I think you have some friends with you.
I, I do indeed. Um, I asked them to hop on at seven fifteen, just to be sure they were ready to go. I'm hoping, I'm hoping you're still there.
Thank you all for, for, um, yeah, for joining us and hanging in there.
Oh, absolutely. All good stuff. Yes, that's very, really important. So I, I, uh, I'm, I'm hopeful that they got a chance to listen in and, and, uh, take that in. So, anyway, um, Board Chair Wolf, members of the board, thank you for, uh, um, giving us some time this evening. It's good to see everyone. And, um, I know we've gone through a lot of really important discussions tonight. This being, um, also an important piece to what, uh, we want to talk about in terms of moving forward with a recommendation. It comes from our science, our elementary science, uh, uh, renewal and adoption committee. And, uh, I want to introduce some folks. Um, in the interest of time, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move through, we'll, we'll, we'll plan on moving through, um, rapidly, uh, succinctly, but, uh, knowing that there's, you know, we'll have opportunity for questions as well. So, I want to introduce some folks. Ashley Thomas, uh, who is, she or she is our K-12 math and science tosa. Ashley's waving right now. Um, Leslie Gray, fourth grade teacher at Templeton. There's Leslie. Longtime staff member of mine. Great to see you, Les there. Um, yeah, teacher extraordinary. Uh, Joe Westfall, second grade teacher at Deer Creek. There's Joe. Good to see you, Joe. Um, Veronica Villanueva, kindergarten teacher at Metzger Elementary School. Veronica's here. Okay, so she may pop in. Um, she's got little ones at home too. Tucking somebody in at this point. Um, and then Stacy Gorgoni, who is our research report for TWIG. Um, and Stacy, I don't see her on the screen. Um, if she's here, so, um, we'll see what, what's interesting.
I'm here.
Stacy here, there she is. All right, fantastic. Stacy, great, great to see you. Um, so, um, I'd also like to thank, um, Directors Zerchmied and Director Emerson, um, again, for their continued commitment and time and effort on our committees, are, are, that have, uh, been happening curriculum-wise and, uh, no different with our science efforts. Um, so very much appreciate their efforts, um, in, uh, in engaging, uh, with these processes. So we started the renewal and adoption process for, for actually K-eight science, um, in the fall. Well, literally, it feels like a lifetime ago. Um, but, uh, but here we are. We, um, prior to, um, the shutdown, uh, we had actually gotten to a place, uh, of consensus and, and, uh, in the board packet, um, what you saw was the timeline, uh, as a part of one of those, um, items, uh, to refer to. Um, but tonight, there's some things about a curriculum that really, um, it's, is, that's aligned to the most updated, uh, next-gen, uh, science standards, which is a breath of fresh air. Um, it really supports a fundamental shift of integrating, um, engineering, um, science standards, technology, um, into the classroom on a daily basis, which really supports our, our STEM, uh, efforts, uh, rather than, um, you know, always looking to, uh, to an after-school opportunity or, um, some funding that's min- fairly minimal for a, a, during-the-day opportunity. Um, one of the, the big moves is to be able to, um, get the next-gen science standards in front of our kids, um, so they could experience that as a part of a science program on a daily basis. So, um, that's exciting. Um, the, the curriculum's anchored in engaging students in phenomena. You're gonna hear that terminology and we'll talk about that, but also hands-on experiences. Um, and it really provides, one of the things that was liked about, excuse me, my cat just jumped on the computer. That's awesome. Um, it supports, uh, it, a real, it has a collaborative and interactive, um, technology component, online component. Um, and, um, that's really powerful and, and in, in our current situation too, that's something that, uh, you know, as we shift to innovation through the use of the tools, um, something that we're, we're excited about as well. Um, but you're also gonna hear about the supports for our, our bilingual students, our two-way immersion program and students who are, are language learners. Um, it was, uh, a component to the program was, was about the ability to really have not just a, a, a straight across translated kind of, uh, Spanish opportunity, but really, um, having material in Spanish that, uh, our two-way immersion teachers, uh, and teachers across the board, for that matter, could really access, um, curriculum that was, um, uh, was more than just a translation, but actually, um, brought concepts to life, uh, in Spanish. So, um, we're excited about that. Other components, um, you'll hear about tonight include differentiation, the ability to differentiate with this curriculum. And, and again, uh, a focus for us as we think about meeting rate and level, uh, and really, uh, supporting our teacher in understanding, um, really strong pedagogical shifts to, to be able to diagnose and describe what kids need and meet them where they are through our CRT work, uh, as well. So, I mention all this, um, because we, we went through the process and then just before, like I said before, before we shut down, um, we, the, the committee came to, uh, a hundred percent, uh, consensus. And consensus doesn't necessarily mean a hundred percent, but we hit a hundred percent, and that was, that was really impressive. Um, and after going through that vetting and rating process, um, there really was no question about what, what, uh, materials, um, our teachers, our committee really wanted to bring forward it, uh, for recommendation. So, um, anyway, along those lines too, it re-ups our commitment, this opportunity anyway, re-ups our commitment to really, you know, develop an elementary schedule that, that, um, provides space for a viable and guaranteed curriculum within our school day. We haven't had that. There's a lot of competing factors with science, social studies, second steps, um, curriculum, health. And so the commitment here is that if we're in, yeah, we're, we're investing in, um, an aligned, uh, curriculum, um, as powerful as this, that we're gonna be able to then, that we will commit to making sure that that opportunity to teach science is in place within our schedule. So, um, that's work that is overdue, uh, for sure. So anyway, um, I'm gonna do this. I'm gonna share my screen. And, uh, see if I can get this on here. Well, thank you for bearing with me in the introduction, but, um, come back here. Present now, okay. Okay, my share is grayed out.
Do you want me to try and present mine?
Let me try it one more time, see what I can do. Okay, I've got it. All right. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Okay. I know that is the standard question when you present. Can everybody see it? I can't see you, so I'll just put that out there. Um, all right, so, um, having, having talked about, uh, you know, the work to this point, um, I wanted to also just kind of, uh, emphasize the committee process. Um, this has been a process that we have been developed and, uh, and really, um, continues to be developed as we go through each of our curricular, uh, processes with different committees, uh, and different, uh, disciplines. But in creating, uh, a committee, um, again, the beauty of this is we get, uh, we get folks who, across the board, who are volunteering or ready, able and willing to spend the time and, and make the commitment to go deep into this process. Um, what comes out of it is the development of a philosophy. And Karen and Jill can attest to this as well, but, um, this, the philosophy statements under the heading of instruction that, curriculum that, and assessment that really has been powerful for all of our, uh, our different disciplines who have developed that. And that really is a driving document as we continue down the road of, of looking at our, our materials even after adoption. Um, and then aligned NGSS, Next Generation Science Standards, um, uh, to grade-level priority standards, which is a part of what we do to make sure that we, um, have alignment in our schools, uh, and across grade levels, uh, which is a really powerful aspect to this process. That vertical alignment, we had K-eight teachers sitting together throughout this process, um, building these, uh, not only the philosophy statements, but also, um, align those standards and making sure that our students are thinking about, um, individual schools to cohort with, moving through our system, having, um, that aligned opportunity, uh, from grade level to grade level. And then looking at then, uh, a gap analysis and that, looking at the standards and the, the current resources that we had, uh, the teachers were using, um, it was very evident that we needed to, uh, move to adoption, uh, as opposed to just simply renewing, uh, or supplementing in some way. And then we went through the curriculum reviews process and looking at different, uh, materials. Uh, and then, like I said, through that vetting and that rating process, um, that's pretty rigorous, we came out with the consensus that was actually unanimous in this, this case. I'm gonna shift, um, to, uh, this next slide and actually hand it off to Ashley and go for an opportunity with the shift.
Thanks. All right, so, um, Todd spoke a little bit about these. First of all, thanks for having us tonight. Um, as I'm just gonna jump into kind of our timeline, but he spoke to a little bit of these, um, our beginning process, a few days was around building philosophy and, um, what was important to us as we looked for, um, guaranteed viable curriculum for science K-eight and in this case, K-five. And, um, but really, as he mentioned, and I'll talk about that again, was kind of coming to that philosophy was a really good driving force as we kept referencing back, like what rose to the top as far as our science. Um, as well as I feel like the vertical alignment piece, which happened in, uh, days two and three, was just really good opportunity for teachers to see what other grade levels were doing. And I feel like the big thing was, um, it helps, uh, lower grades understand the impact that it puts on fifth grade, right? It's the first time that they assess. And so it, it helped them to do that vertical alignment work and understand their impact and their need for having a good, strong curriculum that helps support once those students get to fifth grade and then assess against, again, in eighth grade. But, um, so yeah, our timeline's here and we had six different sessions with this elementary group. Um, we began with nine curriculum, curricula, and by the end, um, of our sixth session, we were narrowing down to, um, our final two. And so with that, and then I have Todd, um, can you just go to the next slide? Um, in here, we also, these are basically our two guiding documents throughout this process. Um, the, one on the left is, uh, our rubric that we used, and this rubric was adapted from two different places. Um, it's kind of a hybrid of the ODE's I met rubric, um, so their instructional materials evaluation toolkit that they used when they were evaluating science standards. And when I spoke to somebody at ODE, they had, um, evaluated materials in twenty fifteen. And so they were able to recognize that, um, even theirs could have used some improvements. And so along with that, there is another organization, a private organization, edreports.org, that, um, evaluates materials. And so the rubric that you see here is kind of a hybrid of those two that we made our own when looking through our materials. And then the document on the right is, and I think you guys have in your pocket, is our philosophy statement that we came up with, um, similar to other curricular area, just like Todd said, starting with a curriculum that instructional practices that, and assessment practices that. Um, and again, it was just our, both of these were our kind of guiding documents throughout the process, but it kept, the philosophy is just really great in that keeps us rooted in what do we really believe? And kind of just in sitting and listening in, um, to the previous, uh, um, action, just really being able to say, what is it that we truly believe from a TTSD standpoint that we want to put forward? Not just as we look at curriculum, be sold by some sales pitch, you know, it's really, so our philosophy helps us tremendously in that work. So those are those two documents. And then, um, just a little bit more about the process. Um, as I mentioned, we kind of started with nine and narrowed over time, uh, but for each one, we evaluated them with our rubric. And, um, when we had narrowed from our original nine down to our four to five, um, we had the adoption committee kind of do a spending my dollar, so they could allocate it all into one lump sum or spread it out however, to also help us along with the process using our rubric as well as the spending our dollar. Um, and then in that third one with our curriculum comparisons, once we had narrowed down to our two, um, on day six, we had, um, publishers that came and actually did, um, a lesson as if we were the students. And, um, when they were done with that, we had an opportunity to just really do some curricular comparisons, um, between the top two curriculum that we had left. And, um, both had strengths. Um, one, one strength from the curriculum that did not come out with a hundred percent con- consensus was that they had a strong, um, science kit with, with what the kids use for the hands-on. And the curriculum that did come to a hundred percent consensus uses or purchases those kits as part of their program, or uses their kits as part of that programming. So that was really like, understanding that we were gonna get the best of both worlds. So that was really nice because the TWIG components were really strong. Um, and so after Todd mentioned a couple of times, um, the board, or the committee felt like after that, um, process, that they were ready to bring it to a vote and they came to a hundred percent consensus to make a recommendation moving forward. And so with that, um, they have made a recommend, or we're making a recommendation to put forth TWIG science. And so what I had, what, another component we have here is Stacy Gorgoni. She is a TWIG representative. And so she's just gonna go over some key components of the, um, curriculum for you guys, and then we'll turn it over to some teachers. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Ashley. I'm excited to be here. It's been fun working with, uh, the Tiger Twelton School District. And Ashley and her team have been a real pleasure to work with. So when you first hear about TWIG, you're probably wondering about her name, why TWIG science? Um, and you might think it has something to do with the stem of learning. Well, TWIG also has another not as familiar meaning, which is to understand or to realize something. So it's that moment when something comes to light. So the TWIG curriculum does just that. It brings new knowledge and awareness with science concepts, investigations, careers, and explorations to both students and teachers. It's built, as, um, Todd mentioned, fully from the NGSS. Um, TWIG has created an engaging curriculum that covers pre-K in both English and Spanish and is offered in both digital and print. And if we can see with this slide here, implementation has been And if we can see with this slide here, implementation has been very easy with TWIG and teachers and students have really, really loved it. Every grade level includes teacher additions for each module, student books, lab kits and other supplemental materials. For the student TWIG book, if you're looking at the number red, number one there, you'll see it's a sample of what a student TWIG book looks like in print and also what a student would see on the digital platform. The TWIG book is colorful, an all-in-one text and investigative notebook and ideal for modeling, annotating and sketching. Online, the student TWIG book is designed to be used interactively, so teachers have the option to assign work either digitally, in print or a hybrid of both. With the teacher addition, you can also see a sample of the teacher addition there in print with what the teacher sees on the digital platform. We also provide science kit resources and additional supplementary materials. Ashley, can you, or Todd, could you change the slide? Thank you. I'm, I would love to go into depth about the vast amount of information TWIG offers here this evening. But for those interested in learning more, you can hop onto our site for a deeper dive into the foundational learning of TWIG based on the NGSS, how phenomena drives learning and get a closer look at the teacher supports that are built into each lesson. TWIG lessons are very teacher-friendly. So this page will be found off of our main page under TWIG.com, under the evaluation rubrics. Can we turn to the next slide? Thanks. So TWIG built this program from the ground up, as we said, from the NGSS standards. In partnership with the Imperial College of London, a leading international steam college, there were many educators, scientists and curriculum experts involved, including the Stanford Center for Assessment, Learning and Equity. Before releasing their curriculum, TWIG did extensive work in the field with students and really listened to their feedback. Students wanted color in their TWIG book. They didn't want to have black and whites. They wanted exciting media. They wanted engaging lessons. So with that, TWIG enhanced their curriculum based on that feedback. TWIG really does a great job of listening to our customers, to our students and to our teachers and modifying or changing things as needed. Since we're a digital as well as a print curriculum, we have the ability to enhance, upgrade and make any necessary changes to content as well as how educators and students interface with the platform. So you don't have to wait years for a new edition to be published to get new information. We can get it immediately. Can we turn to the next slide? Thanks. So each modular teacher addition includes content, flexible pacing, options for fast track and comprehensive lesson planning, differentiated instruction scaffolds and language routines to support the NGSS shifts. TWIG is compatible with Google Classroom, so teachers can assign work by whole class or by individual students. Teachers can also sign online assessments for easier grading and diagnostic information. And we go, thank you. TWIG science performance tasks are what connects classroom experiences to real-world problems and reflect how engineers and scientists behave in the field. Performance tasks allow students to apply the cross-cutting concepts and science and engineering practices and their knowledge of disciplinary core ideas. By using the provided progression charts, teachers are able to see what knowledge students should have, what they will currently be teaching and what more they will, what more students will be learning. They are used to demonstrate the growing mastery of performance expectations and understanding of each module phenomenon. They support students meeting and exceeding the NGSS standards. When we go, there's also on the front of every teacher at the end, there's a layout of the science framework alignment to the TWIG grade level modules. There are four modules at each grade level and they focus around earth and science, physical science, life science, engineering and technology and the application of science. With the exception of fourth grade, every grade level has four modules, as I said, except for fourth grade, which has five modules. So this chart helps teachers to see an overall snapshot of the progressions of the NGSS standards and performance expectations as it relates to the science framework. Next, we're gonna look at the scope and sequence. Phenomena and investigative problems are at the heart of every module. TWIG provides grade scope and sequence tables in every module that show how the dimensions flow and build in sophistication across each grade level. They lay out the anchor phenomenon, develop the storyline for each module and helps to unpack the NGSS for teachers. The scope and sequence also lays out the cross-curricular connections, so teachers can see where language arts, math, art, et cetera, are connected into each module. Next, we're gonna look at lessons and resources. If we could switch slides. Thanks. For every module, TWIG provides engaging, comprehensive lessons that clearly lay out the structure, timing and purpose of each lesson. There are many built-in resources to enhance the teaching and learning experience. Some of these include high-quality videos, digital interactives, read alouds and many, many teacher supports. Okay, we're gonna talk real quickly about fast-tracking. So despite a teacher's best intentions, scheduled time for teaching science can get away from them. A great option TWIG offers is the fast-tracking lessons. Teachers will have the choice in every module to either teach the full comprehensive lessons or to use what we call the fast-track, which blocks lessons so that they still meet all the NGSS requirements. And so for this side, access equity and equity for all students. This is very important and very important to be wonderful and raw conversation prior to this presentation. And so your attention is likely really called to that to this slide. So I want to say that the heartbreaking events of the past couple of weeks are a distinct reminder of the importance of access and equity in curriculum and education. So TWIG science was designed with diversity and inclusion in mind, so every student sees themselves represented in TWIG, represented in TWIG science. TWIG was recently adopted statewide by California, so was heavily vetted in the area of access and equity and was seriously looked at through an equity lens. Moreover, TWIG science resources provide differentiated paths for all students regardless of their background or disabilities. All resources from science, songs, videos, images and interactive texts showcase positive role models of different ages, genders, cultural abilities and social economic backgrounds. Again, with everything being digital, one of the value that TWIG holds is with students and teachers is that any needed changes can be recommended and curriculum can be adjusted as needed. With TWIG, teachers have the tools at hand to ensure every student's experiencing the wonders of science in the classroom. The teacher additions contain comprehensive point-of-use differentiated for all students. Sorry, Todd, I'm still on the back on the other slide. There are choices. There are instructional choices for ELL students, special needs, as well as options for students needing more of a challenge or extensions to the learning. There are built-in language routines designed to remove barriers to learning science vocabulary and foster student participation and instructional responsiveness. Okay, last slide here. TWIG offers a wide variety of professional development for teachers. Many options are already embedded and include science content background, pacing suggestions, model lesson videos and built-in look-forers to support educators to understand what success with the NGSS looks like, looks like in the classroom. There's also a larger array of visuals and videos demonstrating instructional shifts, foundational teacher-student supports and progress. In addition to this, TWIG offers in-person and webinar trainings where specialists team provides support in person and online for technical implementation and science topic training. Finally, in response to the changing educational climate, TWIG has spent endless hours recently designing a distant learning option built into their platform that the Tiger Twelveton School District will have access to with their adoption. This option allows your teachers to continue to provide high-quality lessons that students can do in school, at home or a combination of both depending upon the delivery model. I really want to thank you for your time and thank Ashley and her team for their hard work and dedication to learning more about TWIG. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you. And so next up, we have three teachers that Todd introduced at the beginning. And we're gonna start with Jill, a second grade teacher at Deer Creek. And she's just gonna tell you a little bit about her experience with TWIG and what components stood out to her in this curriculum. Go ahead, Jill.
So when Stacy was talking, she was saying how the phenomena drives the learning that as students go through that process. And as we were looking through curriculum, we saw like that there would be this essential question or there would be this something that would be brought up to get students excited about it. But what TWIG had was, and here's an example, so third graders, for example, they have to, they talk about in the beginning, building the ultimate roller coaster. And so, you know, can you, I, I was sitting there imagining how I would build my roller coaster and how exciting that would be to, for the students as well. Well, in this, in this thought process, in the very beginning, when they catch me and I'm assuming the students as well, because it's such an exciting topic, they're meeting the standards and they're going through this. And in the meantime, you're designing this, this incredible thing. And, and one of the other, you know, while students are learning the engineering process for pushes and pushes and pulls and all the things that they have to meet as far as standards go, but then they, they come up through this with this question that they can apply to real life. And it brings them into that experience and it helps guide their learning and reinforces it. Or, and then I'm flipping through and looking through some of the other materials and I mean, I get to another module and now I'm a paleontologist and I'm learning about fossils. And, and again, we're meeting the standards and we're going through how, how we're going to do what a paleontologist does. And I guess basically what's exciting about it is that we're able to meet the standards with this program, but also use real-life experiences that the students get to learn about and explore and, you know, maybe, maybe become one day. So it was really exciting. That was probably the one thing that caught me with this program that, that was over the others. And again, like I said, it was, other programs had that also, but this one really took it and kept, kept it going throughout the whole entire time. So then in the end, you know, they, they, you know, for example, the kids have used the, the engineering processes they've learned and they've developed that, that roller coaster. So then you have the assessment in there also. And you're able to do that in a bunch of different ways.
Thanks, Jill. So I think we're gonna switch over to Veronica, I believe. And she's just gonna talk to you about her perspective as a kindergarten teacher, thinking about science from a kindergarten TWIG lens. And so, yeah, Veronica, take it away.
Hi. Okay, so basically, you know, via my lens, one of the big deal breakers for a lot of these programs were just the language, the Spanish. It's really hard to find great Spanish resources that are not just direct translations. And we found this one had, you know, above all of them, had just really good authentic Spanish in them. And, you know, coming from the, the TWIG perspective and candor, I appreciated that this program had video presentations, it has vocabulary cards, it has picture cards. And so all these visuals and resources are, you know, great for kids in general, but especially I felt more for kids that are learning another language. And then there's even like a vocabulary routine, which helps with comprehension. You know, all the topics are developmentally appropriate. The teacher addition is very explicit. It's very organized. It's easy to kind of just look through. You don't look at it and feel overwhelmed. And then, like I said, there's just a lot of Spanish resources. There's a family letter. So there's lots of things that normally I would have to create or I would have to translate that is already done for me. And then the workbook that it also has is also appropriate. There's not too much information on there. It's very simple for kids to use. And then the last thing is, like she mentioned, the fast-track, you know, this, this was another thing that I didn't see in a lot of the other programs that, you know, it's great that there's a lot of resources and modules and topics, but, you know, sometimes in a given schedule, we might not have time to, you know, learn everything that we have to. So I like that this program, it just gives you the most important topics to cover so that I have that option to choose between, you know, doing the full or just doing the fast-track. So just lots of great resources, not just from candor perspective, but also from a TWIG lens.
And my screen doesn't show Leslie when I heard her say she's on here, so.
I am, I am. Can you guys hear me? I'm on my mic.
Go ahead, Leslie. Take, take it away.
Okay, well, I taught kindergarten through fifth grade. So looking at all the science programs, I was looking through a lens of teaching in several grade levels. My focus, of course, now is fourth and fifth. So, and as a fourth and fifth grade teacher over the years, it's been hard to find curriculum that really has met the science standards. So we're always looking for supplemental things to support our past science curriculum. And the TWIG curriculum was really kind of had everything that we need as teachers. It has the online component, the visuals, the phenomena, the videos, a really great assessment piece. But I think the most important part of it, two things. One, as we looked at it with our equity lens, we looked to see if the curriculum really, if the kids were represented in it. Kids of all colors, kids of all backgrounds, they're in it. And if I, I wish I could show my screen because I have a little picture of that. But it also showed and introduced scientists that from all scientists of color and culture and backgrounds. And it gave us a real global community of scientists, which we are a global society now, trying to solve problems together. And the real-world issues that TWIG proposes for students are so engaging. I mean, I did the activity of earthquake engineering with a partner and we were just like, we did not want to stop. We just used spaghetti and cake and it was not even that successful. But we had to collaborate and it's that collaborative process that we went through as partners and small groups and whole groups. And we learned as we've been along and gained knowledge and insight and then brought that to the next challenge. So it was a constant challenge using the design process, the scientific inquiry and questioning. I still have questions, you know, I'm still engaged and I did that activity back in February. And so my students are, I'm sure would like catch the fire of these activities. And besides just that engineering and earthquake, I think it even lends itself really beautifully to stories like in our journey series on earthquakes in the 1906 earthquake in San Francisco and then in eighty-nine, talking about design changes that have happened with buildings. We could be looking at and applying that to our current construction in TTSD. Get the engineers and architects that helped design the new Templeton where I work to talk about the earthquake codes they had to have and standards for that. So the application for real-world experiences through the TWIG excited about it. And then thinking further into that, maybe our possible hybrid model in the fall, if kids are there and maybe half-time or we have half a class, being able to have that online component. And then when we see our kids and they're at school, then we're doing that collaborative hands-on process and talking about and investigating. And they could take that home with them when they're not with us. So I think TWIG really gives us lots of really great learning opportunities for kids that are really engaging, that are really global. I mean, I think about all the scientists that are working together to try and find a vaccine for COVID. That's the kind of community building this program brings together for students. They're gonna work together to solve problems. And I mean, that's what we want them to do in an inquisitive, scientific way. So I'm sold.
Yeah, as you can see, this is what I came out with a hundred percent consensus. Yeah.
And I've been around a long time, so it's hard to get me, I mean, I get excited, but when we get new curriculum after thirty years, you know, like, yes.
So bring it, you know, bring it. Thank you, Leslie. So great. Presenting, but I don't, I don't see Todd or Todd's presentation. Is he still there?
Can you see me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. I don't know what happened with my brain, but the whole, the whole thing went down. So anyway, it is what it is. I'm back and. It is what it is, I'm back and uh yeah, so I guess at this point, um uh questions, uh board.
I think Leslie was an excellent closer.
Find me at home and try, try and build it, if there is thirty seven meters high and a bag of sand on top and shake it, will it still hold?
I I was, I've been ten years with Leslie and and her enthusiasm has not changed, I love it.
Nine twenty-five at night. Um so my only comment first, thank you all for hanging in there, you know, with us um in our early appointments to to um or items to to share about this curriculum, science is huge in that creativity and curiosity. Um I am certain is what's going to spark an interest that could carry him, you know, to a career they never imagined. Um and I, you you know, we've talked a lot about equity in different um lights, but I think that idea of opening a book and seeing a variety of of students, scientists um is so important. And Leslie, you touched on kind of my COVID brain, what are those take homes that keep kids engaged in activities? And you touched on that and the different experiences, so it sounds like an incredibly um rich and thoughtful, and it is a million dollars, so it is. Uh but um so just well done, and I think you all answered my questions as we went through the presentation, so board members.
Yeah, I'll just say uh again, thank you um for the the thorough presentation and for the teacher perspectives, especially, I appreciate it very you all and you all taking the time to be here on this very late Monday night. Um my question for Director Robson, I'm curious, um how how will we evaluate, what's the process for evaluating whether or not the curriculum is doing what we want it to do and whether or not it's effective? Um and how, at what intervals does that occur?
Yeah, so our commitment through all of these problems, when we started down the road of undoing the logjam of curriculum, if you will, was to commit to coming back to the table um within a year. Uh really, the heavy lifting we talk about is um once we've uh moved through a recommendation and if it's approved, uh the heavy lifting comes with bringing the teams back together. Uh not necessarily the the same team, but um a group of teachers um together collectively to do the heavy lifting that is, the scope and sequence work, uh the making it fit our system. Uh and making sure that the alignment is there uh in terms of, again, that work that we started with um the alignment through our vertical articulation that occurs during the process. And then making sure that we've got training in place to bring um all teachers on board. Um one of the things, kind of an aside to that, the Math Vision Project and and EdGems, the math at at middle school. Um though, we we started moving um philosophically that place of transformational practice and making sure that we could support our teachers in um pedagogy that really was a different framework and and walking our walk, so to speak, in terms of really connecting students at high levels and and bringing in inquiry-based kind of instruction where teachers are facilitating rather than sage on the stage and just kind of dumping information to kids and really meeting kids where they're at um through assessment literacy practices and so on and so forth. And so what comes with TWIG is no different in this, in terms of the how we were able to lay out kind of this um this program was to have sixteen training sessions as a part of um our partnering with TWIG. Um and in a virtual situation, um we were able to um discuss our needs potentially there with distance learning and we're talking about three virtual sessions equalling one day of those sixteen. So really being able to sustain that effort throughout. So I say that meaning that's a piece of making sure that we're we're, again, walking our walk and making sure that we've got really strong teaching in place, that we get a Bible guaranteed curriculum each classroom. And then two years into the into the process, we've committed to bringing teams back to the table uh collectively and then assessing, where are we with this curriculum, are there tweaks, are there supplements, what, we break it down in terms of really assessing how the curriculum is being used and along those, that two-year stint, we're in classrooms doing implementation checks, working with our administrators and our teams as we've rolled out um teacher leaders and really developing our our lab classrooms. That's just yet another way, when we have peers walking in and seeing model lessons and working hand in hand, that's another check to ourselves to be able to really continue to develop a really strong teaching that way and and check ourselves against whether it's being utilized the way it needs to be or not.
Thank you, I appreciate that answer.
Yeah, yeah.
Um thank you, uh Director Emerson, and I think that maybe Director Fox and Zerzmeid said second together. Um so motion is made by Director Emerson and seconded by Director Fox um to extend the meeting until ten o'clock. She came first in the alphabet, Jill, um any uh further discussion?
Discrimination.
All those in favor are signified by saying aye.
Aye.
We're not gonna recall that one. Okay, we just gotta keep rolling, okay, meeting's extended until ten. Thank you all and thank you, Director Emerson, okay, continue on, Director Robson.
I know, I'm I'm, I would offer up any other question.
No, I I thank you again and I, it was a very thorough presentation, answered um all my questions. The only question that I was gonna ask, has it really been thirty years? It's been that long?
Thirty-two, no.
Oh my gosh.
Leslie's left at twenty-nine, how can that be?
No, well, we had several times, but you know.
Okay, well, I think we um then to move forward with the motion and um Director um Robson, I had sent you some questions. My my only concern is kind of that configuration, what seems to be a really important component to this curriculum, are the consumables? Right, so this is more the operation of, you you know, what will be covered and the commitment of that for the number of years um that I was just curious about.
Yeah, so um the the breakdown really is, you know, the what what Stacy was talking about so much to uh the committee and and our team was, the online components um really are minus the consumables, uh allow our teachers and our students to engage fully in the program. Um and so if we, you know, the breakdown then allows us, at least initially for these six years, allows us really to to provide students with that hands-on kind of brick and mortar uh opportunity. Um and especially when you're talking about giving kids um that initial um jumpstart in terms of uh responding um within their own kind of physical uh notebook um to be able to sketch, to be able to respond, to be able to annotate, those kinds of things that way. But that go away, we have the capability of being uh online digitally um through and through. So um that's exciting as we think about what our future holds for us as well. So I don't know, I don't know if that answers Murray um in terms of the breakdown.
So I guess um may try again, um so the six-year, the the consumables are replaced that covers six years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that was, yes, that I I'm sorry, I I should have just said just to ensure that rich experience is there during that time, that's what I was trying to get to.
A new set of consumables every year for six years.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Jill, exactly, because that does seem like a really important component um of having that hands-on experience.
Yeah, although many of the consumables are the sorts of things that are really pretty easy to find, you know, at your local arts and crafts store, I mean, pipe cleaners, things like that. So it's not like it's very specific uh proprietary equipment that we would have to re-buy.
Right, right, and what, and and so you're talking in terms of the kits itself, um beyond kind of the the workbook piece. Um and the kits, one of the things we're able to do is just having history with this and FOSS kits and having the, you know, different kinds of kits where we were um every year getting to a place of asking, basically as a system, asking teachers um at each individual school, what do they need at each grade level, as opposed to simply spending a lot of dollars to re-up a kit uh when we might not need to do that, so we've got a cost savings there that's pretty healthy, so we'll roll that into our system again.
Okay, but but Todd, what you're saying then is you have the support to ensure regardless of where a school, I mean, and to to fund that, that's what I, what I know, is that that's covered, okay?
Absolutely covered, yes.
Okay, okay, I'm good, um if there's no other questions, go, take a motion.
I move for purchase of a six-year adoption of twenty nineteen twenty twigs science elementary school science curriculum for grades K through five and including professional development supporting transformational inspectional practices in an amount not to exceed one million dollars.
I second.
Motion was made um by Director Zerzmeid, seconded by Director Fox to um approve the um curriculum adoption as presented. Any further discussion?
I would just like to say thank you to all the team for all your work on this, this was a lot of meetings, I mean, Director Emerson went to a lot of them full-time, I went to many of them part-time and it was a ton of work and so thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill. Um so with that, again, we'll do roll call for this, uh Director Bowman.
Aye.
Director Emerson.
Aye.
Director Fox.
Aye.
Director Zerzmeid.
Aye.
Director Wolf is an aye, motion unanimously carries, congratulations to you all. Before it's seen in action, so thank you all um so much. And we will now move to um redefining learning program technology purchase. Uh Director Moore and Director Banana, so thanks, Todd.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board Chair Wolf and members of the board, uh Director Moore and I will be discussing this in echo. Um I am sharing what I hope to be, the letter that was, the memo that was included in the board pocket. This request is to purchase a thousand um Chromebooks for our incoming ninth graders. Um back when we went out for the bond, part of the conversation that we had was to try to right-size the refresh cycle of the devices for students with um the various uh logical grade level breaks. Um and as uh the devices that we are purchasing, which are all under five hundred dollars, um those are four-year devices, uh and so we worked with our um bond council to make sure that they were amateurized correctly so that um the depreciation of them after four years um was acceptable to either um dispose of them, which we have been doing, um or we could equally um provide them to our students upon graduation. And so because our, the cycle of on which we brought the devices in, we didn't bring them in by grade level, so we will be met with a a quandary after this next year, if not before, with all the devices we've handed out to our instructional assistants. Um it made sense to do that at this time so that we could welcome our ninth graders um in the fall twenty twenty um with new devices and have them, keep them for the duration of their high school career. And I think I will leave it at that to see if you have any question, clarifying questions or questions about the refresh or the purpose.
I have no questions, board members, yep.
I don't have a question, just a comment, I love the idea that the kids get to keep the computers from leaving, I think that is that's what uh Sweden's been doing for decades and it's something that I've thought for a long time that we should be doing, and so I'm really pleased.
Excellent.
Thank you, Susan, very much, um no other questions, I'll take a motion.
Director Fox, will we get your questions out this weekend? I'm sorry, go ahead, Director Emerson.
Yeah, Erin, do you want to say something?
Oh, sorry, I was on mute, my bad, um I just said thank you, now Susan, you answered my questions um in the email. It's just, just for the record, it was just about um flexibility, like if we run into hard times, could we extend it for another year? Uh just a bunch of kind of detailed questions, but but thank you, I uh yeah, you've answered all of them.
Okay, thank you.
I move to the board to approve the purchase of CTL Chromebook devices with twenty seventeen bond fund that authorized the district superintendent or CFO to sign the purchase order to CTL Inc. in an amount not to include, not to exceed four hundred seventy-two thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Director Zerzmeid, seconded by Director Bowman to approve the purchase of CTL Chromebook brick but devices um authorized by the twenty seventeen bond funds, any further discussion? Okay, again, roll call, Director Bowman.
Aye.
Director Emerson.
Aye.
Director Fox.
Aye.
Director Zerzmeid.
Aye.
And Director Wolf is an aye, motion passes, so thank you both very much. Um and then our next item on a roll of um David Moore's, I think, um modification project, CMGC guaranteed price amendment number five. Um and um is Debbie back, David, are you doing this by yourself now?
I I think Debbie's with us this evening also, but I'll
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'll start out and if there's questions that I can't answer, she she'll be happy to address them for you. So yes, this evening, we're asking uh the board to consider amendment number five for the GMP for the Talton High Modification Project. And uh previously, uh we had a board-approved GMP of of just over eighteen point eight million dollars. Uh this is an increase request of three hundred sixty-eight thousand nine hundred for a total GMP of nineteen million two fifty-three, six fifty-seven, and we outlined some of the the re- the the primary reasons for this increase, including um water damage investigation, uh exterior building envelope repairs, uh cooling being added to the boys locker room and improvements for the in-building first responder radio coverage. And uh again, these total approximately three hundred fifty thousand. And with uh the CMGC fee of eighteen nine, we're asking for amendment nine amendment number five for a total three hundred sixty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars. And um again, we'll be happy to answer any questions, we did have questions over the weekend which I can address at the outset here, uh there was a question by a couple board members about remaining a project contingency, uh the three hundred sixty-eight nine is coming out of project contingency, so within the project and not program contingency, so there's still would be a hundred ninety-four thousand left after this to get get the project uh substantially completed um by the end of the summer before uh school reserves.
Board members' questions, um and so David, thank you, and that was one of my questions that was gonna be needed and how we're excited to see this project maybe come to a close, so anyway, any of, anyone, any other question, excuse me? Okay, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the amendment number five to the GMP in the amount of three hundred sixty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars and increase the guaranteed maximum price to nineteen million two hundred fifty-three thousand six hundred fifty-seven for the Talton High School Modification Project.
I second.
Motion was made and second, uh made by Director Fox, seconded by Director Zerzmeid as presented, any further discussion? Okay, um please approve motion by signify by saying aye or nay, roll call, Director Bowman, Bowman. Director Emerson.
Aye.
Director Fox.
Aye.
Director Zerzmeid.
Aye.
Director Wolf is an aye, thank you very, very much, and we will move to our next agenda item. Um which continues with CMGC for Tiger High School, Debbie and Director Wolf.
Yes, we're asking the board to consider uh amendment number two to the GMP for the Tiger High Modernization Project, and this is a total of uh one million four hundred ten thousand seven fifteen dollars. Uh for a total GMP of sixty-five million five hundred thirty-one thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars. And some of the makeup of um the one point four million include um the painting, exterior painting of the existing facility, refinish of the the main gym floor. Um underslab air circulation system for the main gym floor. Um for a total of, including the construction contractor's fee at at four point four nine percent. For a total increase to the GMP of that that one point for a total increase for the G M P of that, that one point four million dollar plus. So, um, with this one, we're also tapping into the project contingency. So contingency within the project and not tapping into dollars outside the project in the form of, uh, program contingency. And this would leave, uh, ninety-two thousand in the project contingency for Tiger High School project to, um, have access to in the event it's needed before substantial completion at the end of the summer before the, the school, um, re- resumes.
Thank you, Director Moore. Questions? Okay, um, and thank you both. And Debbie, I, I really do, um, appreciate, um, I feel you've been a, a hawk for the, the district since you started, um, in, you know, twenty sixteen as we planned for this. And, and I just see these major programs come in um, at the, um, funding that they are. And I just wanted to acknowledge your support and Director Moore as well, um, as being right there to guide. And Darren, I believe you're still on the call, just really grateful for the oversight and guidance of these very major, uh, projects. So thank you. And, um, with that, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the amendment number two to the G M P in the amount of one million four hundred and ten thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars and increase the G M P guaranteed maximum price to sixty-five million five hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars for the Tiger High School Modernization Project.
I second. Debbie, Fox and Zertzmead show the same thing. Motion was made and seconded, um, to approve amendment number two to the G M P as presented. Any further discussion?
It's only because we are the, you know, tax and spend liberals on the board.
That, that's what I think of immediately. Um, so with that, um, roll call, Director Bowman?
Aye.
Director Emerson?
Aye.
Director Fox?
Aye.
Director Zertzmead?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. Motion carries unanimously. Um, okay, I think we're not there yet. Um, yes, final one, Director Moore. Uh, Debbie, thank you very much. Um, is, uh, the purchase from Western Bus Sales.
So yes, uh, this is a, uh, a one-time opportunity for the district to replace, um, uh, older, um, non-efficient and non-environmentally friendly, uh, buses from our fleet. Uh, in that, uh, the D E Q offered a grant program this year, um, to reimburse thirty percent of replacement costs for, uh, three of our, our most needy buses. And, um, so we actually been talking about this and planning for it much of the, the last year. And it dawned on us, uh, at the eleventh hour that, and this is actual, actual purchase, even though it becomes cost neutral in the end. It's, it's an actual purchase that by, uh, in accordance with our public contracting manual, the board should approve purchase in the amount of two hundred and eighty-six thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. Uh, but the way it works is again, we'll get that thirty percent reimbursed by the D E Q. And it was, uh, the, the source of the funds, uh, are the, the Volkswagen settlement dollars. Um, that, uh, through, I believe through a class action suit, um, the dollars came to the D E Q and they're being distributed in this way among others. And, um, the interesting thing is, is it's, there's a, a tight window. We gotta have this all completed, um, by the end of, of the year and that we have to actually destroy the engines of the, the three replaced bus, buses, which involves among other things, drilling a hole into the engine and showing proof to, to the D E Q before we get our grant money. Uh, the other part of reimbursement is, is directly through the, the state school fund grant in that, um, we always put our buses on a depreciation schedule. We have to report that, that schedule on an annual basis to the Department of Education, the People Services Division, People Transportation Services Division. And, um, so we'll depreciate these buses over ten years. And so we'll get the seventy percent reimbursed over ten years based on the artificial life of that, the vehicles. So, um, again, an opportunity we couldn't pass up to make it a cost neutral, uh, acquisition for the district. Uh, wanted to point out that one of my colleagues did point out an error in the memo. It doesn't impact the, the action. But somehow I got, uh, seventy percent of three hundred and eighty-six thousand is four hundred and sixty-four thousand. So I have no idea. Must have something in the calculator, but the actual number is two hundred and seventy thousand six ninety-seven. That'll be the reimbursement that comes from the department of, uh, over the ten years.
Karen, did you catch that?
Only right before he said it.
It was actually, uh, Debbie Pearson who, of all people, who probably doesn't normally look at the whole board packet, but.
Must have been bored.
Didn't Murray just call her a budget hawk? I think.
Yeah, we go, we go back and forth.
So I, I actually have a serious question at some point.
Directors, please proceed.
Are these, are these diesel buses or are these electric or are these gas?
They're, they're diesel.
Are they like a cleaner diesel then? Is that the idea?
Yeah, they're, they're more modern, so they're gonna be cleaner. I mean, the other buses we're replacing are, are close to, you know, fifteen to twenty years old. And we've been, as I explained, Dr., uh, Director Fox asked questions over the weekend and, um, we, it traditionally, we've only replaced, uh, we've had money in the budget to replace one bus a year. And then a few years ago, remember, we did a five-year lease for five buses. So we haven't been able to replace additional buses the last couple of years. So this is enable, enabling us to accelerate our replacement, um, of buses and get the overall cleaner, um, fleet on the roads. And more efficient, cost-effective.
Yeah, nice. Thank you, V W.
Yep.
Okay, entertain a motion.
I move to approve the purchase of free buses from Western Bus Sales, Inc. for the amount of three hundred and eighty-six thousand seven hundred and ten dollars.
I second. Just a matter.
I love it. Motion was made by Director Emerson, seconded by Director Bowman, um, uh, as presented. Any further discussion? Okay, once again, um, signifies through aye or nay and through roll call, Director Bowman?
Aye.
Director Emerson?
Aye.
Director Fox?
Aye.
Director Zertzmead?
Aye.
And Director Wolf is an aye. And with that, the motion carries and we are adjourned. And I really do want to thank you all. It's been an important and long evening, but really appreciate everybody's time. So y'all have a good night.
Good night.
Yep.
Meeting is adjourned.
Good night.